We're just getting the livestream ready, audience.
Good evening, councillors, officers, members of the public in attendance and our viewers live streaming tonight's meeting. My name is councillor Suzanne Newton, I'm the Mayor of Darabin City Council and the Chairperson of tonight's meeting. It's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's council meeting. I declare this meeting open at 6:04pm. This meeting is a scheduled hybrid meeting and so I also welcome councillor Lawrence and any members of the public who are attending online. This meeting is being livestreamed and a recording will be made available on the council website as soon as practicable after the meeting. I would first like to acknowledge the Wurundjeri Woywarring people, the traditional owners of this land, and pay my respects to elders past and present, and recognise their continuing connection to land, water and culture. I also went to a Reconciliation Week event today and Rubenberg, one of the Treaty Commissioners, also asked us to say that we support treaty in Victoria and I very much do. I would like to introduce the councillors and senior staff who are with us this evening: councillor Tim Lawrence online, the Deputy Mayor, councillor Emily Demetriades, councillor Gaetano Greco, councillor Tom Hannan, councillor Trent McCarthy, councillor Susan Rennie, councillor Julie Williams. Our offices in attendance tonight are Peter Smith, our CEO, Kylie Bennetts, the General Manager Community, Ena Jum Piccolo, the Acting General Manager Customer and Corporate, Rachel Olivier, the General Manager Infrastructure Operations and Finance, Vanessa Petrie, the General Manager City Sustainability and Strategy, and Anthony Smith, the Governance Advisor. I would also like to welcome the municipal monitors, June Anstey and Ross Millard. In terms of apologies, councillor Lena Messina is an apology tonight. We'll now go on to disclosures of conflicts of interest. Councillors and officers, are there any conflicts of interests or interests to declare? I'll go to Vanessa.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two conflicts, one with Thornbury High School kindergarten on school site opportunity to lease and the notice of motion regarding Two Wing Grove Street and I've previously disclosed these conflicts to the CEO.
Thank you. And councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. I also have a conflict of interest which has been previously declared in relation to the matter relating to Two Wing Grove Street in Elphington, so I'll be leaving the chamber if that comes up during the meeting.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Are there any other interests or conflicts of interest to declare? No. Okay, so we will go on to item five, the confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. Councillors, could I please have a move for the adoption of the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 29th of April 2024? That's moved by councillor Williams, seconded by councillor Greco. I'll put that motion to vote. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. I'll now go on to council's occupational health and safety responsibilities. Council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to ensure anyone attending tonight's meeting feels safe, both physically and emotionally. It's great to see everyone here this evening. I would like to remind everyone in attendance to be respectful of each other and as outlined in our governance rules, please note the following: a councillor or any other person who addresses a meeting must do so in a courteous and respectful manner and must take direction from the chairperson whenever called on to do so. Any member of the public physically attending a meeting must not utter any offensive, indecent, insulting or objectional items or words, including words that are racist, sexist or homophobic, or interject or gesticulate offensively in the council chamber. Silence must be preserved by the gallery at all times during a meeting, other than by the person in the gallery who is invited to address the meeting. If any member of the public engages in conduct that is improper or disorderly, the chairperson may direct that person to cease their conduct and the person must comply with that direction. I'll now go on to public question time. We have 30 minutes of public question time. If we exceed that time, I'll ask for a procedural motion to extend question time for another 30 minutes. In line with council's governance rules, no questions will be taken from people in the gallery unless they've been submitted by 12 noon today. You can only ask three questions and you cannot speak for more than two minutes. Please be mindful, this is question time, so please only ask your question. Questions relating to notices of motion, petitions or urgent business will not be accepted in accordance with the governance rules. For members of the public who have registered to ask a question in person, I will call your name when it's time. If I call your name and you do not respond, I will take it you are not in the gallery and one of our officers will read the question on your behalf. The relevant general manager will then provide a response. If you are in attendance, I'll invite you to come to the lectern to state your name and suburb and ask your question. If you have more than one question, please ask all of your questions together and then the responses will be provided. Like questions will be grouped together. The first person who submits the like question can ask their question. Councillors and Vanessa, the first questions... Vanessa's already gone. Councillor McCarthy, I'll ask you to leave the chamber as we have some questions about Wing Grove Street. Thank you. Thank you. So, our first question is from Gemma of Fairfield and she is not attending, so Jodie, could you please read her questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, Gemma, has three questions. The first is with respect to the site at Two Wing Grove Street, Elphington. What are the key outputs that council is expecting from the feasibility study? That is, what information is council seeking that it does not have with respect to the site? Her second question is: stage one of the master plan provided in the draft operating budget for financial year 2425 also provides for running a first-stage expressions of interest process to identify potential partner organisations. What is the primary purpose behind seeking partners and what is the scope of such a partnership? And question three: stage one of master planning implies there are a number of stages to follow. What does council anticipate to be the stages that follow and over what timeline will these stages be delivered?
Thank you. I'll go to Rachel for the responses.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. So, for others attending, the feasibility study that Gemma is referring to is proposed for the 2425 financial year and subject to council's finite budget decision in June. She's asked about the key outputs from the study and the key reason for the feasibility study is so that when we do call for proposals from potential partners and community organisations that might be interested in working with council on that site, we can give them accurate information about the constraints and costs and that they can factor that information into their proposals. The site's a former landfill, it has many buildings that end of life and some have asbestos in them. We want potential partners to have sight of any hidden costs before putting a proposal together. The main elements would be a geotechnical study to identify which locations on the site are sufficiently stable and suitable for buildings and the second would assess the buildings on the site and the costs to fix those so that they could be used or to demolish them, depending on the state of those buildings. The second question that Gemma has asked is about the primary purpose for seeking partners through an expression of interest process. So, the purpose of that is to help identify and engage with potential partners, whether they're community organisations or others, who would have an interest in putting that site to community use and particularly partners that might be interested in leasing or managing the site in the future. The site's in a public use zone, we'd be seeking proposals for community uses generally consistent with the zone. This stage would seek high-level proposals through a fair, open and transparent process and that's the kind of process council needs to run to progress discussions with partners. It's needed so we can meet our obligations for good governance and fairness. The detailed scope of an expressions of interest process hasn't been developed, but generally we'd intend it to be open, to allow potential partners to propose their best creative ideas and we'd share the feasibility study that I talked about before with potential partners ahead of that process so that they can factor that information into proposals. Gemma's last question was about the stages of master planning. So, indicatively, we would expect community consultation to follow those first two stages in the 2526 year. That would be followed by a second request for proposals stage where we'd be seeking detailed proposals either from one or a few partner organisations selected out of the stage one EOI process. Formal statutory consultation would be needed before council could formally lease land and then a lease would need to be sort of finally negotiated and established, which could possibly happen in 2027. That timing is subject to future decisions of council and therefore to change.
Thank you, Rachel. The next questions are from Miranda of Elphington, who is not attending, so Jodie, I'll go to her questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, Miranda has two questions, again relating to Wing Grove Street. The site has had numerous soil contamination tests, structural assessments, geotechnical reports prepared, hazardous material audits... hazardous material audits. Are these reports available to councillors or the public and if so, what were the findings, even if preliminary? And her second question: stage one of the master plan included in the draft operating budget for 2425 provides for completing a development feasibility study. Will this feasibility study be public and be presented to council?
Rachel, I'll go back to you for the answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, there have certainly been a number of reports. They don't provide a whole picture and they're often very old. That means that they need to be updated before they can be relied on. For example, we've got reports on asbestos management at the site, but we don't have an assessment of the costs to bring buildings up to fit-for-purpose standards. Generally, these reports haven't been published. The past reports will be reviewed as part of putting the feasibility study together and the study will provide up-to-date and holistic information across the site. We expect to be able to share the feasibility study at about halfway through the 2425 financial year, so summer. Stage... the second question from Miranda is about will the feasibility study be public and presented to council? So, yes, we'll share this with the community and potential partners and community organisations involved in that and yes, it will be reported to council. I do want to mention that it's possible that some of the supporting data might need to be handled confidentially. We would assess that at the time and if... but it wouldn't stop the feasibility study and that information being shared.
Thank you, Rachel. Have we got Emily from Elphington in the audience? Please come to the lectern. Welcome and please ask your question. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I've just got to find it. Throughout the various policies of the council, there is continued reference to discretionary powers. Why hasn't that been applied to Two Wing Grove Street and how... well, that's actually... that's the question.
Thank you very much, Emily. I'll go to Rachel again for the answer.
Emily, it's a slightly different question to the one I've been given information about. I think what I will need to do is ask an officer to contact you and make sure we're understanding where you're referring to, the words discretionary, to be able to respond to that fully. We'll get in touch with you in the next couple of days, Emily.
Thank you, Emily. And the next person we have is Marion from Elphington and I'll ask Jodie to read the questions, please.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. From Marion: when will the CEO respond in writing to each of the three requests in the EV hub petition, given that at the April council meeting? I was promised a response in writing so that it can be accurately conveyed to the 1300-plus signatories. And Marion, second question: given the climate emergency, the support of over 1300 people and council's emphasis on sustainability, cutting CO2 emissions, promoting EVs and supporting local businesses, why has council not tried to actively facilitate the tenants' vision of an EV hub?
Rachel, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, certainly the CEOs delegated the response to the permission to me as the executive team lead and the responsible general manager. I have sent a formal response, Marion, today. I'm sorry that has taken longer than I had hoped and certainly meeting with you on the 17th of April was also part of providing council's response. The matters we discussed at that time are essentially consistent with the letter that I've written to you, but I do hope that helps and I'm sorry it has taken the time that it has. In terms of your second question, I know that the EV hub proposal is related to the use of a particular council property and that property is the subject of a current expressions of interest process that's in progress and that's the mechanism that council has used to actively consider proposals. We are required to have an open process which is unbiased and fair and these processes need to be conducted carefully so that the same process applies to every applicant and that decision-making is free from outside influence and for that reason I'm not able to discuss the sort of substance of your question in detail.
Thank you, Rachel. While we're on this topic, I might ask a couple of supplementary questions of the CEO. So, CEO, would you be able to explain public use zoning for the public? Thank you.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. Historically, council had leased this site to Decal or traded under MIC. They were a not-for-profit organisation, so council met its obligation under the Planning Environment Act by head leasing the site to a not-for-profit organisation. And within the lease, Decal were able to then sub-license buildings on that site to start-up businesses, again, consistent with the zoning of the site. So, prior to Decal handing in the lease, council met its obligation under the planning use zone by head leasing to MIC in effect and council ensured that public use was occurring on the site through its lease agreement with MIC, which required MIC to lease the buildings or license the buildings, sub-license the buildings to start-up businesses with the requirement that those start-up businesses be moved off-site. I think the intent was within three years or when they became mature businesses. That did not occur holistically and then when council took over the lease, we... because we were no longer head leasing to a not-for-profit, we were faced with a situation where we were head leasing to mature businesses who, when we got legal advice, were not complying with the public use zone. So, to enable those businesses to continue to trade and have time to find commercial premises, we under delegation gave an additional 11 months. But the EOI process is looking for compliant uses under the public use zoning.
Thank you. And would you be able to explain for us probity in this EOI process?
Thank you, Mayor. Probity is a word that's thrown around a lot. Essentially, council, as all local governments and state governments, do have a procurement policy. So, when we are dealing with either a tender for services or in this case, the license or lease of a site, we have to have a market process which gives any proponents fair access to put in a proposal. It's very difficult for officers who are in that process to, one, talk about proponents in that process because they need to maintain the confidentiality of people who've submitted a tender or in this case, an expression of interest and, secondly, it's done under delegation because we want to protect the process. So, petitions, letters, requests for meetings, emails to councillors can't... need to be ring-fenced, if you like, from the process because that process needs to be fair and often in a tender process to ensure probity, we say to applicants in a tender process that if you are talking to council, you can only talk to these nominated officers about your proposal and you shouldn't be talking to other people about that and if you do talk to other people about your proposal, then you can be ruled out of the process and that's to protect all applicants in the process. So, that's how probity, Mayor, in practicality works, which is why I think at times officers have been unable to or reluctant to respond to some of the many community inquiries we've got on this process because we're trying to protect what we call the probity of the process, so it's a fair and open process for everyone who's submitted the EOI in that process.
Thank you, Peter. Do we have Jim from Fairfield? Jim, please come to the lectern. Thank you, Jim. And we'll get you to ask your questions.
Thank you to Jodie for helping me get them in order, acceptable order. The first one, and I hope I get the wording exactly right: given the delegation of responsibility re to Wing Grove Street, how does council explain the failure to provide written answers to letters, multiple letters about an affordable EV hub and treatment of the proponent? That's question one. Question two: under what forms of help and coordination are available from council's climate and sustainability and/or economic development areas to further advance development of the initiative for an affordable EV hub within Darabin? And that's the second question. The final one is: under what circumstances can council grant licenses to proprietary companies limited by shares on public land zoned as PUZ6?
Thank you, Jim. We'll go to Rachel for the response.
Thanks, Jim. I... certainly the correspondence relating to this matter that's come through various parts of council has been referred to me as the executive team lead and the general manager and certainly meeting with you last Friday was part of responding to your various correspondence. Really happy to confirm the main elements of that also in writing. I would add that we generally would make a judgment about how to respond. Sometimes we'd respond in writing, but not always. Some people prefer responses in other ways and writing can feel bureaucratic, so we do sort of make those judgments and I'm very happy to confirm the main elements in writing with you. And it... sorry. In terms of your second question, so... Yep, no, it's okay. I've got it in front of me. Because the question is related to the EV hub proposal, we do have to be careful about how I respond to it at this time, I think for the reasons that Peter has outlined. What I'll do is arrange for an officer and an independent team to contact you and they'll be able to advise about the sort of help that may be available in a general way without breaching confidentiality, but certainly internally we'll manage the response to that quite independently of my team, which is looking after the expression of interest process. And then you've asked about the PUZ zone and in what circumstances it might be suitable for a business. Certainly, I would understand that your interest in that topic arises from the current EOI process that's in progress. I can give you a general answer. It essentially goes to how we understand we can make decisions under that zone and so there are two different responsibilities council has for land zoned, public use zoned, Schedule Six. It's got responsibilities as a landowner or a public land manager and it's got regulatory duties under the Planning and Environment Act as a responsible authority and internally we manage those separately. So, I take responsibility as the land manager for council and my colleague Vanessa takes responsibility for the responsible authority role of council. Under the zone, land uses... some land uses can be carried out by council without needing a planning permit and that's where we're satisfied that they're on behalf of the public land manager, so for council and that they're generally consistent with the purposes of the zone. And I forget the exact wording, but for community services and I think utilities and something else which escapes me. Most other uses will require a planning permit and a separate independent assessment process and what they're considering when that happens is whether the proposed use is aligned with the purpose of the zone.
Thank you, Rachel. We'll go back to... oh, sorry. Yes, Jim.
According to how Rachel answered it, there were two aspects of it. It wasn't relating to a particular site. It was about public land within Darabin zoned as PUZ6 and it was about a specific form of company called proprietary companies limited by shares.
Rachel, did you want to add anything?
Look, I think the tricky thing is I couldn't categorically rule in or rule out that as a possibility. I don't think the planning zone itself would rule it in or rule it out and it would be going through that assessment process of the uses, that is what that decision would be made on.
Thank you. We'll go back to Kay of Hawthorn, who's not attending, so I'll go to Jodie for her question.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. From Kay, why in January 2023 do council recommend that CEO be delegated authority over short and midterm uses of the sites?
And Rachel, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your question, Kay. It's normal and good practice for matters of this nature to be delegated to the CEO. Many matters are delegated and it's necessary to service a large community like Darabin. Council generally sets policy which provides important direction that the CEO and the CEO's delegates then have to follow and it's through setting of policy that essentially council has confidence in the work of its delegates.
Thank you. And can we get councillor McCarthy and Vanessa back, please, and then we'll restart? Welcome back, Vanessa and councillor McCarthy. The next question we have is from Dawn of Thornbury and Jodie will read his questions. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor. Dawn has three questions. The first is: has council performed any feasibility study to indicate how much of the estimated 92,930 additional dwellings of zoned housing capacity in Darabin are viable to be built? The second question is: has council undertaken a study to understand the imposed costs of heritage on feasibility of developing heritage-listed sites? And number three: will council include the imposed heritage cost of developing the seven proposed places of worship sites in the... in the scope of amendment C 222D?
Thank you. And I'll go to Vanessa for the responses.
Thank you for your question, Dawn, and through you, Mayor Newton. Council has been undertaking research to inform its housing strategy. The study has identified a potential capacity for an additional 92,930 dwellings, considering planning settings and some other factors that can affect the likelihood of development. There are other things that can influence the viability of new housing that are beyond council's control. And these include interest rates, escalation of construction costs and financial and tax incentives, coupled with statewide planning reform to encourage lot consolidation. Regarding your second question, it has long been held by planning panels across Victoria that financial matters are not relevant considerations to determine whenever to apply a heritage overlay. The primary consideration in determining whether to proceed with amendment C 222D is whether the individual places have heritage significance. A heritage overlay does not prohibit development of a site, but rather it seeks to ensure that new development conserves and enhances heritage places and conserves those elements of the place that contribute to its heritage significance. And regarding your third question, it has long been held by planning panels across Victoria that financial matters are not relevant considerations to determine whether to apply a heritage overlay. And the primary consideration is whether the individual places have heritage significance.
Thank you, Vanessa. The next question is from Angela of Northgate, and I'll ask Jodie to read her question. Questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Angela has three questions. The first relates to a phone call that she made to our finance area querying payment of an invoice, which she subsequently received two remittance notices for. However, one was not for Angela, but included information of another person. And Angela's question is, why was the remittance notice of another party with full details, including name and bank account details, sent to my email? And what process does council have in place to avert data and privacy breaches? The second and third questions, will the monitor report on service delivery performance as part of his or her appointment? And what are the terms of reference for the appointment of the monitor? And in what circumstances would an administrator be appointed at city of Darabin or any other local government body?
Thank you. And we'll go to Rachel for the response.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Angela. Look, I'm really sorry that that occurred. It shouldn't have, and I appreciate you alerting us to it. Given the nature of it, we've looked carefully at what happened so we can try and prevent it recurring. We found that the issue was caused by a data entry error of the email address. It was essentially copied into two places when it should have been copied into one. So we'll take some steps to address that issue. And we'll look at how we can strengthen the process to minimise the risks of data entry. We, I also want to take the opportunity to apologise for the delay in processing of payments, which was usually on a fortnightly basis. And I think we have resolved that at this point.
Thank you, Rachel. And I'll go to Anna for the second and third question.
Thank you through you, Mayor. Thanks for the questions, Angela. In response to your second and third questions, the minister for local government is responsible for monitors' terms of reference. They include monitoring governance and practices of council across a range of items, including the implementation of the previous monitor's report, meeting procedures and decision making processes. A full list of the terms of reference can be found on the Local Government Victoria website. And with regard to your third question, the circumstances in which an administrator would be appointed to the city of Darabin is a matter for the minister for local government.
Thank you, Anna. Is Matt from Preston in the audience? No, okay. Jodie, I'll get you to ask his question, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Matt has two questions. Why are you flying a Palestinian flag on the town hall? And should you not be flying both the flags of Israel and Palestine?
Mayor, before you answer, do we need a continuance of time for question time?
In two minutes we will. So ask me again then. Thank you. Kylie, over to you.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you for your questions, Matt. Council resolved to fly the Palestinian flag at Preston Town Hall on the 18th of December 2023. The flying of flags from other nations and social justice flags is a matter for the elected council.
Thank you, Kylie. And councillor, can I get an extension of time?
Yeah, thanks. I'll move an extension of time of 30 minutes.
Thank you. I've got councillor McCarthy seconding. All those in favour? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. So we will now go on to, do we have Connie from Reservoir? Thank you. Please come to the lectern. And please ask your questions.
I have two questions. The latest available data Darabin council has on the wellbeing of Darabin residents is from 2021. It shows high levels of psychological distress in adolescents, 14.4%, and adults, 20.4%. As a councillor myself, I find the lack of updated statistics and specific focus on mental health concerning. Given that isolation and sedentary lifestyles are a top priority for our municipality, I was informed by your staff that new data would be available in December and that community consultation will start in August. What action has the council taken since 2021 to support the mental health of our municipality and residents? And how will it incorporate lived experience in the new wellbeing plan? Can you please also update the website to reflect current data services from 2021 until today?
Thank you. And would you like to ask your second question as well?
I will, thank you. Given the current research, we know loneliness contributes to a person's mental health decline, particularly affecting those aged 18 to 49 years of age. These statistics equate to 50% of Darabin residents. And the data provided on your website, again, is only available until 2021. Given the 2023 report on loneliness, this shows 31% of Victorians are impacted. What is Darabin council doing to address the needs of these individuals and creating community connectedness to address it?
Thank you. I'll go to Kylie at the rest of the response. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you for your questions and interest in this really important topic, Connie. In 2024-25, officers will be working with council on a new health and wellbeing plan. It's part of the development of the new council plan. And part of this process will be updating the data available, mapping services provided by council and other parts of the service system, identifying where there may be gaps and identifying who is best placed to address these. Officers are currently in the process of developing the community engagement approach for this work. And one of the elements we're looking at is how to ensure there are opportunities for people with lived experience in a range of areas to contribute to the development of these plans. Currently, council provides grants, delivers and facilitates programmes, events and services that address loneliness through supporting social connectedness and positive mental health. Direct services include connection with seniors through social groups, food services, youth outreach, get active programmes and maternal child health services. Council also delivers free events at council facilities, including the intercultural centre, libraries and the East Preston Community Centre. Council funds other organisations who have different expertise to deliver direct support, including neighbourhood houses, Moss, Your Community Health and Diverse. They run a range of programmes, provide outreach, social support and emergency food to vulnerable residents. In 2023-24, there were 116 community grants awarded. And 102, or 87% of those, were focused on activities supporting events that address loneliness through supporting social connectedness and positive mental health. These programmes and projects will continue to be delivered throughout the year.
Thank you, Kylie. Have we got Nicholas of Q? Yes, you may.
My question was, what has been done since 2021? Your feedback was from 2023 or 2024 onwards. And it's also querying if you can update the current data from 2021 because there's nothing available on the website?
Through you, Mayor. So we can certainly take the data question on notice and see what we're able to do. In terms of the things council have done since 2021, I probably could have been a bit sharper with my response. So the first couple of paragraph talked about the various things that council does. So we've certainly been doing those since 2021. I can check with officers and see if we have details around the community grants that were provided during that period. We touched on those for 23-24, but I can see if we have data available for the community grants in that period also.
Thank you, Kylie. Is Nicholas from Q in the audience? Thank you, Nicholas. Please come to the lecture and ask your question.
Thank you. It's in relation to agenda item 9.5, places of worship for permanent heritage controls. As a secretary of the Greek Orthodox Community of Melbourne, representing over 50,000 members and that was established back in 1897, we own the St George Parish and the adjoining hall on St David's Street in Thornbury, which has become a hub recently. And you might be aware that we provided the hall after it was renovated by us at our expense as a vaccine hub during Covid. And based on that, we are concerned with the lack of consultation and limited notification regarding council's application for a heritage overlay. And we kindly request an adjournment until we are able to consider all the facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. I'll go to Vanessa for the response.
Thank you for your question, Nicholas. And as Jim Bosanakis's question is very similar, I'll answer them together. And thank you, Jim, as well for your question. This evening, council will consider starting an amendment process which includes a public exhibition process. The decision before council is whether to request authorisation from the minister for planning to begin the planning scheme amendment process. If the minister gives authorisation, there will be a four-week consultation period where owners of the broader and the broader community are invited to make submissions on the proposal and express their concern or their support. As a part of this consultation, officers will meet with each community using the places of worship to explain and discuss the proposed amendment. Council is required to consider all submissions when deciding on the next steps. If the amendment then proceeds to a planning panel, there is the opportunity for community to participate in the planning panel proceedings. At the conclusion of these proceedings, the panel makes recommendations to council about the amendment.
Thank you, Vanessa. I'll go to Ruth of Northgate. Would you like to come to the lectern? Thank you. And please ask your questions.
Thanks, Mayor Newton. My first question is, what is the total cost of the two appointed monitors this year compared to the cost of the previous monitor in 2022? Question number two, under the proposed new hard waste trial that's starting in 2025, will renters in apartment blocks be eligible to book a hard waste collection? And question three, it seems that your street, your say group C, community engagement will not be completed as planned in this term of council. What are the reasons behind the delay to the overall timeline for this programme?
Thank you, Ruth. I'll go to Anna for the first response.
Through you, Mayor. Thanks, Ruth, for the question. The cost of municipal monitors is determined by the minister for local government. We have allocated $150,000 in the council's draft budget for 24-25. And this compares with the total cost of around $113,000 for the previous monitor.
Thank you, Anna. I'll go to Rachel for the question about hard waste.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Ruth. For renters in apartment blocks which receive council waste services, the answer is yes. Some apartment blocks use private waste collection services and these wouldn't be eligible. Renters can tell if they have a council service by looking at their bins. There should be a council logo on the front.
Thank you. And I'll go to Vanessa for the your street, your say question.
Thanks for your question, Ruth. The rolling cycle of engaging one-third of the community each year will see group C areas of your street, your say project engaged in 2024 and 25. And this will be completed in the fourth and final year of the council plan. Group B investigation was completed over two years. And this was due to additional unexpected work that the team needed to undertake during this period.
Thank you. Is Camille of Northgate in the audience? Camille, please come to the lectern.
Thank you.
And go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm a bit nervous. I don't do this very often.
Don't worry.
My first question was, is council aware of the complaints made against the abandoned and long-term parked vehicles on Dennis Street, Northgate, next to All Nations Park? Basically, some of these, I've just purchased a house here and it's been an ongoing issue. I've heard from the previous owner as well as many of my neighbours. Some of these vehicles have been left here upwards of five years. You can see on Google Maps as well that they have not been moved even an inch. They've got flat tyres, some have no licence plates. And now that Northgate Plaza is cleaning out their parking lot, we've noticed more of them appearing on our street in the last couple of weeks with no licence plates. They're taking up a lot of parking for residents as well as parkgoers and blocking drainage. I actually had to clear it today across the street where the park is because they're completely covering drainage because they're never moved and it's not able to be swept. Though after recent escalation on my part towards council, which has been very helpful, the council did come out to mark the tyres and sticker the vehicles. However, I noticed that somebody's peeled off the stickers of one of the vehicles already. And I noticed somebody trying to scratch off the markings of another one. Some of them are still there, so clearly they have been abandoned. But it's not enough to prevent this to continue happening. My neighbours are 87 years old and can't be here today and they don't speak English very well. But we've talked about this on multiple occasions and it is an issue and it's been going on for a long time. So I want to help the community now that I'm new here. The second question is, will council please consider removing these vehicles and installing an eight-hour or whatever you see fit time restriction with enforced parking and permit exemption to allow residents to park longer, to prevent these from remaining here and remaining unmoved for years to come and potentially months and just getting them out of the community to make way for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Camille, and a big welcome to Darabin. I'll go to Vanessa for the response.
Thank you for your question, Camille. Through you, Mayor. Camille, I, you know, I appreciate this must be very upsetting for you. And thank you for providing that additional information you shared this evening. It's very helpful. Council is aware of the abandoned vehicles on Dennis Street and there's an ongoing investigation. Officers from our local laws team have visited the area and they have initiated the abandoned vehicle process. We are committed to resolving this issue as swiftly as possible. Regarding your question about changing the parking signs, I've asked that a transport officer contact you this week. There's a process that we have when residents might want to request a change, so they'll talk you through that process.
Yes, you may.
So I know that the process for marking tyres and stuff has been started and I truly do appreciate that. However, it's a two-month process that cars have to remain in the same spot. Is it possible to maybe revise that if this is not able to continue with changing the parking rules? Because a two-month, I find that a vehicle being abandoned two months is quite a long time to allow for a vehicle to stay there, just to start the process, especially if it can be moved one inch in order to make the cycle start over again. Thank you.
Vanessa, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, thank you. So it is important that we follow the required rules. But I will have a senior officer from the local laws team contact you tomorrow so they can talk in a bit more detail about what we're required to do. And it sounds like you've got some more information and evidence to share with them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vanessa. And I'll go to the next question from Carl of Northgate. Jodie, would you be able to read out Carl's questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Carl has two questions. In relation to your street, your say area B, specifically the proposal to reduce vehicle traffic along South Crescent, Northgate, why did the briefing for councillors ahead of the meeting in December and subsequent relevant meetings in early 2024 not provide the traffic count figures gathered in 2021? And the second question, regarding pedestrian safety on Station Street, Fairfield, and a potential pedestrian crossing on the south side of the level crossing. Can you please provide the dates in the last five years when council has raised this with the Member the dates in the last five years when council has raised this with the Member for Northgate, Vic Roads, or DTI, or equivalent government departments, or with the relevant minister?
Thank you. I'll go to Vanessa for the responses.
Thank you for your questions, Carl. Through you, Mayor. Regarding your first question, traffic, including bike rider volumes, are some of the details used to assess potential projects? Officers will share further details about this data when recommended projects, when council presents, when officers present the next report to council. Regarding your second question, a formal letter to the Member for Northgate was sent in February 2021. And since that time, these improvements are often discussed and advocated for at officer levels when we meet with our counterparts in the department.
Thank you, Vanessa. And I will now go to John of Epping. Would you like to come to the lecture?
Thank you, Mayor. Three questions tonight. First one, council leases out the City Oval from mid-August to the end of September to the Northern Football League on Saturdays and Sundays from 8am to 6pm. The football crowds park in the surrounding areas, including the market and the shopping strips?
John, I believe that this question isn't acceptable. Would you like to ask your other questions?
No, no, that has, I've changed.
John, would you please, would you like to ask your other questions, John? You have two other questions.
Mayor, I have changed.
John, would you like to ask your other questions?
No, I'm not going to be bullied by you, Mayor.
John, would you like to ask your other questions? Then, John, could you please resume your seat?
No, I've got questions to ask.
And please ask your other questions.
As I was saying, this football crowd parks in the surrounding area, including the market and the shopping centre.
John, I understand that that question is not acceptable. Could you please ask your other questions?
Well, all right, let me rephrase it again for you people. Council leases out the City Oval from mid-August to the end of September.
John, you're asking the same question, which is not acceptable.
Mayor, if you had a look at the last question.
Could you please answer your other questions?
No, Mayor, you are just trying to bully me. I am not.
John, could you please ask your other questions?
No, I'm going to complete this question, Mayor.
John, could you please ask your other questions? Or I'll need you to resume your seat.
I am not going to be intimidated by you or bullied by you.
John, I'll need you to resume your seat, please.
No, I am going to ask these questions. I'm sorry, but, you know, I have changed the question, they rang up and said that word. So I have changed the wording. You have not changed it from your governance person this afternoon and so forth.
John, could you please ask your other questions?
I am going to finish this question, Mayor. If you don't want to finish it, answer it, that's fine. I've asked the question.
John, if you're going to ask a question that's not acceptable, I need you to resume your seat, please.
Well, hold on, what's not acceptable about it, Mayor?
John, could you please resume your seat?
No, no, as I said, Mayor, you're not going to bully me.
Could you please resume your seat?
No, I'm not going to, I'm not going to sit down because I have not finished my.
John, please resume your seat. All have to adjourn.
No, I've got a few questions to ask.
John, you can ask your other questions, or I'll need you to resume your seat, please.
Well, no, I'm very, very sorry, Mayor, but you are out of order, not me.
John, could you please ask your other questions?
All right then, I'll ask the question. But you are wrong, Mayor. I'm sorry, you are wrong. Mayor, I was advised by that the unsealed pavement at Donovan West Reserve will not be in the capital works budget in the 2425 year. On the information given to me by council, one would think the unsealed pavement would be around the same size as the sealed pavement. The glossy brochure of the council made out to me showed the unsealed pavement is completed and is in a uniform state. Mayor, let me tell you, Mayor, that this unsealed pavement is nothing more than a well-worn track. Some parts of this track is no more than four inches wide and grass growing over the pavement. Mayor, will council complete this track into a uniform unsealed pavement as the sealed pavement by your officers as shown on your brochures?
Thank you for the question, John. I'll go to Rachel for the response.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, John. What you're describing sounds like a maintenance matter, and so it doesn't need a special capital allocation in the budget. One of our officers will inspect the site, and if maintenance is needed, will essentially fix the paths.
Will your officer notify me? Because honestly, Rachel, it is a disgrace to even show it in your brochures as an unsealed pathway.
John, I think the question's been answered. Would you like to ask your other question?
Mayor, hold on. You're allowed other people to come up and ask a secondary question.
John, would you like to ask your other question?
I'm sorry. No, you're wrong again, Mayor. You're just.
John, would you like to ask your other question?
You are bullying me, Mayor.
John, would you like to ask your other question?
All right, my second question, or third question. Mayor, could you please advise how much council has spent on consultants from the 1st of July 22 to the 31st of 6/23, and from the 1st of July 23 to the 31st of December 23?
Thank you very much for the question, John. I'll go to Anna for the response.
Through you, Mayor. Thanks for the question, John. Council's expenditure in relation to consultants is published each year in the annual report.
Thank you.
And you give me the figures, please. That's what I'm asking for.
John, could you please resume your seat so we can go on to the next question?
Mayor, I have to take.
John, could you please resume your seat?
Mayor, if you're not going to give me the answers.
John, could you please resume your seat?
No, no, I'm sorry, Mayor. You have not answered the question. I said how much the council spent.
John, please resume your seat.
Mayor, will you send me out the annual reports, send them, type them, look them up?
Please resume your seat, John. Thank you. We need to get on to the next question. Thank you very much.
Your one question has not even been asked. I've changed the question around so I can.
John, could you please resume your seat? Thank you.
No, you are wrong, Mayor.
John, please resume your seat.
You are trying to bully me all the time.
Excuse me, Mayor, is it possible, because I know that John doesn't have internet connection, is it possible that our officers can update him at a later stage in regards to the reports he's asking for?
Through you, Mayor, I will provide you with the annual reports, John, and I'll make sure an officer contacts you about your maintenance request. And whilst she cannot ask the question around Preston Parking here, I know we've discussed it, and I'm happy to discuss it further with you, but under the governance rules, you're not allowed to ask the same question again. Thank you for, I think we're all trying to help you, John, so thank you for your questions.
Thank you, Peter, and thank you, Council Williams, for your assistance. I'll now go on to Hunter of Preston, who I believe is attending in person. Thank you.
The questions I seek to ask tonight are critical of the council's intentions to provide transparent and accessible information necessary for an informed electorate and to execute the will of the people. My first question tonight concerns accessing councillors' voting records. Currently, this requires manually sifting through council meeting minutes, which is highly inefficient. To find how councillors voted on specific issues or to review their records, you have to search through years of minutes or know the exact dates of votes. This process is laborious and lacks transparency with an election only four months away. Voters deserve easy access to councillors' voting records to make informed decisions. Can a database be created to provide this information in time for the election or in the future? My next question is in regards to the recent draft budget documents. As an average voter, I found them very difficult to interpret and understand. Such confusing documents make it difficult for the public to be properly engaged and critical of council's intentions. I'd like to know if the budget documents can be improved or a more accessible version created for average voters to view and understand in future years. Lastly, after looking over the budget documents, it's my understanding no money has been allocated to public acquisition of Preston Market. This is despite Preston Market likely being the issue with the most popular support among the community. If the council truly reflected the will of the people, then public acquisition of Preston Market would be the next budget's top priority to reflect that. Why is that not the case?
Thank you very much, Hunter. I'll go to Anna for the responses.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, thanks for the question, Hunter. The minutes of a council meeting are an official record of the actions and decisions that were made at the council meeting. If a vote on an item before council is not unanimous, the meeting minutes record councillors who voted for and against the item. There are currently no plans to create an additional standalone database to monitor the voting records of councillors. Secondly, thanks very much for your feedback on the budget documents. We'll certainly take this feedback on board and see how we can make things more accessible for all members of the community.
Thank you, Anna. So councillors, oh, sorry, Peter, go ahead.
Through you, Mayor, we might just answer the third question, which was about public acquisition of Preston Market.
Thank you.
Just so we've answered all. Yes, you're correct, Hunter, there is no, nothing in the budget to publicly acquire that. It is council's decision. The budget night's coming up on the last meeting in June, and it's for community members to make submissions, which I think have now closed, on what else they'd like to council to consider in the budget. So you're correct, there's nothing in the budget at the moment for that acquisition.
Thank you, Peter. So that concludes public question time. So I now will go on to submissions. Council's governance rules permit members of the public to register to address an ordinary council meeting in relation to matters listed on that agenda. In accordance with our governance rules, submissions can't be made in relation to notices, motions, petitions, and urgent business. Thank you to those people who've registered to make a submission tonight. We've seen, we've received one request, and I will call on Nicholas Kukuvitakis, who has requested to make a submission on the agenda item 9.5, Amendment C 222D, places of worship permanent heritage controls. Nicholas, please approach the lecture, and you have two minutes for your submission. Nicholas, I think might have gone. Okay, that's fine, we'll sort of move on from there. Thank you. So we will go on to item eight, petitions. So councillors, I understand we have two petitions this evening, starting with councillor Hanan. So councillor Hanan, I believe you've got a petition about South Crescent.
Thank you, Mayor. Shall I, I seek to table a petition concerning South Crescent in Northgate to be referred to the CEO for consideration and response. The petition has been signed by approximately 160 people and complies with the council's governance rules.
Thank you. Would you like to summarise the petition?
Thank you, yes. I'll read from the petition, but not all of it, in the interest of time. It says that we, the residents, rely on South Crescent in Northgate for our daily commutes. We cycle to school or work, walk to the Westgarth shops, and use this route to get around the inner north of Melbourne. Darabben City is currently considering projects and plans on South Crescent, but they've failed to do anything to make South Crescent a safer cycling or walking, or better space for walking. All they are currently planning is to remove four parking spots near Westgarth Station. This is a serious missed opportunity. I'll just summarise, it says cycling is not only a sustainable mode of transport, but also a healthy lifestyle choice, yet without proper infrastructure and safety measures in place, it can become a risk rather than a benefit. In Australia alone, there were 38 cyclists fatalities in 2020. South Crescent is no exception. There's little reason for cars to use South Crescent from one end to the other, but lots of people tell me they've had near misses riding along it. We propose that Darabben Council takes immediate action to prioritise cycling and walking along South Crescent. These actions could include installing a vehicle barrier to prevent cars using the whole length of South Crescent, working with the state government to get a bike path built along the nature strip by the train line, counting the bike and walkers along South Crescent. Darabben should listen to the views of the people that sign this petition and consult with the local community on these proposed actions. Darabben should find the money for any changes that need to be made in next year's budget. By making these changes, we can ensure that everyone who uses South Crescent, from my family to yours, can do so safely while promoting healthier lifestyles and sustainability with our community.
Thank you, councillor Hanan, for tabling the petition. So I believe we do vote to accept the petition, so I will seek a second for that, councillor Rennie, and we will now vote on accepting the petition. So all those in favour, that is carried unanimously, thank you. And we now have a petition to be tabled by councillor McCarthy. Councillor McCarthy, you've got a petition on St Mark's Coptic Orthodox Church.
Thanks, Mayor. I seek to table a petition concerning St Mark's Coptic Orthodox Church, breach of permit conditions, and excessive noise pollution, to be referred to the CEO for consideration and response, with an update on this matter to be provided in a council governance report. This petition has been signed by 40 people and complies with council's governance rules. The petition reads as follows. We, the undersigned, request the city of Darabben to undertake all necessary actions and use all powers available to the council as the responsible authority to fully and completely enforce the permit conditions assigned to St Mark's Coptic Orthodox Church at the address of 24 to 40 Gilbert Road in Preston without delay, and to uphold the rights of residents to live peacefully in our homes. Mayor, I'd also now like to also indicate and ask that the petitioner, Jonathan Baird, make a two-minute submission.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. I will call on the petitioner, Jonathan Baird, to please come to the lecture for your two-minute submission. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you very much for your time. Firstly, I want to state that I'm not advocating to have the church shut down, I'm simply advocating to have it remain as a place of worship rather than an event centre. We purchased our house in 2019, and as lockdowns unwound in 2022, we were confronted by the frequency and scale of the events occurring in the church car park. These result in significant noise pollution, running multiple times per week with hundreds of attendees and lasting for many hours per event. We initiated mediation with the church in an attempt to act in good faith and seek an amicable resolution. We first met with them in December 2023, sorry, 2022, again in 2022, 2023 twice, and then finally in January 2024, unfortunately to no avail with no change to the noise and issues that were outstanding. We then entered a formal complaint with the council on 29th of January this year, and we're very grateful for the officers and the communication that we've received thus far. However, unfortunately, the church continues to ignore those efforts and continues on with the frequency of events. The church have installed in the car park behind our house floodlights, seating, a food truck, and they've converted a storage shed into a food service area, effectively turning this area into an event centre that can run any day, anytime they see fit. The community originally objected to the church development, however, it was allowed on appeal with specific conditions put in place to ensure the rights and amenities of the community. The church currently systematically breach these conditions every single week, and I urge the council to use all available powers and measures to ensure the peaceful enjoyment of our house. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. I'm sorry to hear what you've been experiencing. And we will now go to, we've got councillor McCarthy moving to table the petition. Have we got a second, councillor Rennie, and all those in favour? Thank you, that's carried unanimously, thank you. Councillors, we have a large agenda this evening that we need to get through in line with the time limits in our governance rules, and I will be permitting questions of officers prior to the commencement of debate on each item. If I think sufficient questioning has occurred, I'll exercise my right under the governance rules to limit questions and ask the debate to commence. So we will now go on to the consideration of reports, and the first report we have to consider this evening is 9.1, the governance report. Councillors, have we got any questions of the officers regarding this item? No questions? Okay, if there are no questions, we will commence the debate. I remind you that once we enter the debate, there will be no further questions. Do I have a mover of the motion? Councillor Rennie, are you moving the officer's recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Have I got a second, councillor McCarthy? Councillor Rennie, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things I like about the governance report is that there was always something different, as well as many reports that we see each month. And this month, I'd particularly like to highlight and bring people's attention to the work that's been done identifying previously confidential matters that can now be publicly reported to the community. We always have a preference for making decisions in public, sometimes because of the sensitive or commercial and confidence nature of some decisions, we're not able to do that. But quite often, when a decision is made in confidential part of the meeting, we are able to release the matter later. And here we have a review that's been undertaken to identify a number of things where decisions were made and they are now able to be released. I'm really delighted that this is the case because we always, I think, are in the favour of making everything possible available to the community. The other thing that's different in this report is that there is some general planning information around applications determined by VCAT, and that's something that we often don't see in the governance report because it comes to planning. So I'd like to draw people's attention to that. I think it's really good for people to understand what happens at VCAT, and that's both when our officers make decisions under delegation and when councillors make decisions. So I commend the governance report to everyone and particularly highlight those items, as well as those that are more standard and that we see every month. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you councillor Rennie. Councillor McCarthy, go ahead.
Thanks, mayor. I'd support everything that councillor Rennie has said. I'd also just note, even though I have a conflict in relation to anything to do with Two Wing Grove Street, and it is referred to in this report, I don't believe that it affects the matter of the item because it's about releasing decisions already made by council. So I just want to put that on the record. Mayor, I just want to draw councillor and the community's attention to the Freedom of Information report that is included in this governance report. I think it's important for people to be aware of their rights under the Freedom of Information Act, to seek information through council and also for council to also be transparent in relation to the outcomes of those processes. I'll end it there, mayor, and I commend the officers for the detail that is included in the report, and also thank councillors for including their own reports on their activities in the last month, which I think is important for us to know too. Thanks.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. Are there any councillors who'd like to speak in opposition to the motion? Have I got any further speakers on the motion? No, okay, councillors, I will put this item to the vote. All those in favour? That is carried unanimously, thank you. Councillors, I will go to item 9.2. This is the 23/24 Quarter Three Performance Report, Financial and Non-Financial, ending 31st of March 2024. Councillors, have we got any questions on this item? Councillor Greco.
Thank you, Mayor Newton. The question that I have, that I'm seeking further clarification on, I note that in the report that we expect to only complete 70% of our council plan, and I was just wondering what contingency plans are in place to ensure that we get close to completing 100% of the council plan, or what plans are in place to mitigate that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Greco. Anna, would you like to respond?
Through you, mayor. Thanks for the question, councillor Greco. So you're right, the report does say that we are forecasting that only 70% of the actions will be completed by the year end, and this forecast has been based off past trends, which we're expected to see in Q4. So to give you the context of how we come up with that forecast, so each quarter, there's been a gradual increase in off-track, actions increasing from one in Q1 to six in Q3. So as indicated in the report, we have been impacted by some unplanned work, as well as some complexity revolving around some of the work that we've been doing. So again, if this trend continued, we would anticipate the 70% completion rate, and this would be a conservative estimate. As unplanned work is, in its nature, is unpredictable, it's difficult to identify which actions may be at risk. However, there are currently 15 in the report that we've identified that were as off-track, delayed, deferred or not started. We are committed and focused on the delivery of the council plan, action plan as a priority, and limiting the unplanned work would certainly help, you know, support a higher level of delivery. The action plan includes further work to progress these actions in the fourth and final year of the council plan, and notwithstanding delays this year, there may be a flow on impact on future years.
Thank you. And Peter, would you like to add to that?
Yes, if I may, through you, mayor. We briefed council on this thoroughly on the 30th of May, I think there was something like 125 motions. A lot of that was additional work. We did flag when the quarter two report came in that the quarter three report and progress against council plan, action plan would be impacted by a significant amount of notices of motion leading up to Christmas and then extra work generated through special council meetings after Christmas. A lot of that extra work, when I look at the impacts and where projects have been impacted, a lot of that extra work fell into the community division, and some of that was deemed urgent by council, so those officers have been pulled off to respond to that extra work, and that's impacted on some of those planned work in the council plan, action plan. So we did flag this, that we expected a dip in quarter three performance when we brought the quarter two report in, because at that time we were experiencing a lot of extra work to implement resolutions of council.
Thank you, Peter. Are there any further questions, councillor Greco?
If I may, thank you, mayor. Just a supplementary question, just want to get an understanding of how will councillors be updated in regards to achieving the council plan? And more importantly, how will the community be informed or updated about how we're tracking in relation to the council plan, and also what contingencies will be put in place in terms of prioritising the work, given that we may not be able to reach our objectives?
Thank you. Anna?
Do you want to go first?
Through you, mayor. Thanks for the supplementary question. Certainly, this report is in the public domain as part of the agenda papers, and we'll continue to provide the community with an update on our website. And in terms of keeping council updated, we'll do that continually through the briefing and report process.
Thank you, Peter. Anything to add?
Yeah, just through you, mayor. We did flag in the workshop with councillors before Christmas that, based on quarter two trends, that we were not going to fulfil the whole council plan, action plan at that time. I remember talking to council about prioritising and finishing what was on the council plan, action plan. Unfortunately, we had a lot of extra business in the third quarter, which has delayed us even further. We will report on this at the end of the year, and we are prioritising particularly those actions that we've started to try and finish some of those before the end of the council term. But I think we've been very transparent over the period of our ability to achieve the council plan, action plan and the impact of some of that extra work that's come our way.
Thank you, Peter. Are there any further questions, councillor Demick Traddis?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I just wanted to ask, so how are the projects being prioritised as to which ones won't be completed?
Through you, mayor. We did ask council to try and give us a steer on that ahead of, at the beginning of this financial year and at the end of last calendar year. We are endeavouring to complete the ones that we can complete. I'm happy to run a further briefing with council if they want to prioritise the remaining two months of this financial year and indeed the time leading up to caretaker. If council want to give us more direction on that, I'm happy to have a briefing on what council will leave as the priorities.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? No, okay. If there are no further questions, we'll commence the debate, and I remind you that once we enter the debate, there's no further questions. Do I have a mover for the motion? Councillor Hanan, are you moving the recommendation by officers? Thank you. And do I have a second for that item? Councillor Rennie, councillor Hanan, please go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. So as we've heard, this is the quarter three report, ending in 31st of March, which includes progress on our council action plan, capital works, our resolutions and procurement, as well as financial performance. Overall, the Q3, quarter three results indicate that the action plan is progressing well. 70% of, 72.5% of actions are on track, 8.8% delayed, 7.5% off-track, 8.8% completed, 1.3% not started and 1.3% deferred. As we've just heard, that the impact in the ability to deliver this plan is the large volume of resolutions that have come from us, from councillors. In the last quarter, there were 48 new council resolutions, bringing the total for the year to 125. This is a substantial amount of unplanned work, which inevitably leads to re-prioritisation, and it's really important for us as council to keep this in mind in coming months, particularly as we go into the budget process, to prioritise completion of our approved council plan. In terms of finances, though the quarter three figures are ahead of budget, there is forecast for a 3.49 million net unfavorable operating performance result compared to the budget, and 2.98 million more than council's adopted capital works programme. So those, you know, they're negative, they're not what we're looking for, they're, you know, they are small in context of the overall size of our budget of over $200 million, 200 million operating budget, 30 million capital, but need to be watched and do provide a context for the budget process as a synergy going into. The main driver in terms of capital works being underspent at the moment is timing differences, so that's not a huge issue, but the overall amounts, I think, is what we need to focus on. Some good news is that we have a strong commitment to social procurement and local business procurement has improved each year, and there's been a strong increase to local business payments in the last quarter compared to the previous year. And look, there are many really great achievements across the whole of the organisation, but I won't go through them. One I'd just like to highlight is that council has been successful in obtaining a grant of 212,500 from the Free From Violence Local Government Grant Programme for the next three years. It'll be used to employ a part-time cultural inclusion primary prevention officer, who will implement a guide for preventing family violence and all forms of violence against women, and deliver a suite of family violence prevention training and resources. Centring the rights of culturally and racially marginalised people will be a key focus of the project, and I think that's very timely and great work there. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hanan. Are there any speakers who are in opposition to the motion? Are there any further speakers on the item?
Sorry, mayor, I think councillor Rennie was the second, did she?
Sorry, I drew a blank. Councillor Rennie, would you like to speak as second?
Mayor, that's completely okay, I was going to reserve, and so please continue and see if there's anyone else who speaks, because otherwise we might be able to move on.
Thank you councillor Rennie. So councillor Rennie has reserved her right as second. Have I got any further speakers to the item? Councillor McCarthy.
Mayor, I'll make this really brief. I just want to take the opportunity to thank our officers for the work that's gone into this report. I have had the benefit of chairing a couple of council, well, chairing a couple of council committees recently, and when I think about what gets discussed in those committees, and I think about how it appears in this report, it appears in some cases as one line, but there is a significant amount of work that sits behind that one line. And I don't say that lightly because this is a summary report of council's work in this most recent quarter, but it is, I think, a discreet point of measurement for us as a council, and I think also for the community. I just wanted to make one point, and I think it's really important for everyone to remember that this type of reporting is actually something that was only introduced in the previous council term, it is not something that has a long history. And I would hope, and I just would flag, that the next term of council continues this granular level reporting in relation to the action plan, because I think it helps any community member have a look at this report, get a really quick snapshot of what is covered off, but I think also gives good credit to the work that our officers and community do in partnership on a regular basis.
Thank you. Have we got further speakers to the item? No, councillor Rennie, would you like to speak to the item as second?
Thank you, mayor. And thank you to councillor Hanan and councillor McCarthy. I'd like to echo those words of thanks to our staff who have worked so hard and continue to work really hard to try and achieve the best outcomes for our community and to complete as many council plan, action plan items as possible. I think the responsibility for achieving high levels of completion falls completely on our shoulders as councillors, and the one thing that I think we can do more than any other is to make sure no further unplanned work falls on the shoulders of our staff between now and when our council plan actions are over. And so in doing that, I urge all colleagues to reject any and all unplanned work through notices of motion so that we can focus all of our attention on completing these action items that we collectively decided were the most important for our community. Every time we pass a notice of motion, we tell the staff that something else is more important, and we cannot do that and expect them to complete the work that we prioritised initially. So that's why I think, you know, it's my expectation, I'll probably vote against almost all notices of motion, which is not to say that those things aren't valuable, it's to say we had a plan, we wanted to achieve 100% of it, and it's our responsibility to make sure we do that by not throwing unexpected work up at our staff. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rennie. And as I can speak to close the debate, I would agree with what's been said so far. If we need to think about why 70% of council plan, action plan items are being met this year, I think we do need to look in the mirror. 125 notices of motion or ways that other, the staff are being directed is very challenging, and I think it's up to us councillors about how we proceed from here. So I will close the debate there, and I will put the item to the vote. All those in favour? That is carried unanimously, thank you. Councillors, we'll go to the next report, 9.3, the Families, Youth and Children Strategy and Stage Two Community Engagement. Councillors, do we have any questions of the officers about this item? No questions? Okay, in that case, we'll commence the debate, and I remind you that once we enter the debate, there will be no further questions. Do I have a mover of the motion? Councillor Greco and seconding councillor McCarthy. Councillor Greco?
I'm moving an alternate motion that I've submitted and circulated.
Thank you councillor Greco. What time does you circulate the motion? Yes, so councillor Greco, we're on 9.3, the Families, Youth and Children Strategy. What time did you circulate the motion?
I'll check.
Is your amendment on the Child, Youth and Family Strategy or on Kindergartens?
On the kindergarten.
This is Child, Youth and Family, wrong one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologise, I'm jumping ahead. It's not in relation to this item, it's in relation to the next item that I've moved a, that I, I'll be moving an alternate motion, so my apologies for that.
Okay, so you're withdrawing your moving of the motion? So in that case, do I have a mover of the motion for the Families, Youth and Children Strategy, councillor McCarthy and seconded by councillor Greco? Councillor McCarthy, would you like to speak as mover to the item?
Thanks, mayor. Look, I'll keep it brief, but I'll also acknowledge the presence of one of our Youth Citizens' Jury members here tonight, joining us in the gallery as well. So it's really important that we continue to think about how this work happens, who drives it, how we deliver the outcomes as a community and as a council. And as the council that put forward the Youth Citizens' Jury proposal back in 2017, I think it was, it's great to see it continue as a key part of council's engagement framework. And I'd also acknowledge councillor Williams, who has been, I won't say, I'm trying to find the right term, we've been chief collaborators on this one for a long time, and so I know that the matters that are affecting young people in our community are dear to the hearts of all councillors, but particularly the way in which council responds in a partnership framework such as what we have here. Mayor, I just wanted to highlight just some of the key numbers that come out of this report, and also just to restate that what we are doing here tonight, and I hope all councillors will support this, is endorsing the community engagement that's taken place on the draft Families, Youth and Children Strategy, releasing the Stage One Community Engagement Summary, of course, thanking everyone for providing valuable feedback during the engagement process, and also noting the Young Citizens' Jury vision at Appendix C and thanking Young Citizens' Jury for preparing the report. I think that's really important for us to recognise that this is a report that has been done through collaboration. Mayor, just to give some headline numbers here, we have had over 800 people engaged in the process to date. We have had some key elements that have come through the consultation process so far. Importantly, I think it's worth noting as well that this strategy itself, and part of the core part of the strategy, is seven themes that we've identified, which are critical to our focus areas. Mayor, you can see those themes outlined on page 127 and 128 of the report. And I think for anyone to be wondering, why does council have a strategy in this place? It's actually really important for us to guide the work that happens, but also provide the agency and the authorising environment for our officers to work in close, deep and meaningful partnership with other organisations. So it's not just council services, but it's also others who we work with. So it's not just council services, but it's also others who we work with in collaboration to make great things happen. I probably want to just touch on and finish on one final point, which I think came through really strongly in the consultation, which is the role that council has in advocating for the interests of children and young people and families. Council does that through a range of mechanisms. Sometimes that is advocacy to our members of parliament, it's advocacy to agencies, but sometimes it's also advocacy within council. And I think it's worth noting that that work is ongoing because the space is changing all the time. And we did hear earlier from one of our submitters about the importance of that wellbeing data being available to the public, and I would also support that measure as well. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Councillor Greco, would you like to speak as second?
May I reserve my right to speak? Thank you.
Sure. Are there any, would anyone like to speak in opposition to the item? Are there any further speakers to the item? Councillor Rennie.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to speak quite briefly. Firstly, to thank the staff for their incredible work pulling together all of this information into a strategy. And also for every community member, particularly young people, who participated in the consultation. And I think just to mention something about the process, that this type of policy involves two types of consultation process. The first to go out and ask our community what they think should be in a policy, what are the things that are important to them, what really matters. And the staff then go away and do an enormous amount of work putting the policy together based on all that feedback. And this motion tonight heralds the second part of consultation, which is the consultation to actually say, here is the policy we have pulled together based on all of the information you gave us, do we have it right? Have we captured what it is you wanted us to capture? Do you have other thoughts and ideas? And, you know, hopefully we will hear from the community that they really like the way staff have captured those ideas. We may also hear that we've missed out some things and we can then revisit that. So I think that's a really important process issue. I think it's fantastic and I commend it to everyone. And look forward to the feedback that we'll get, leading no doubt to final endorsement. Thank you. Can I also just say that one of the decisions we made early on was to move away from having a youth strategy and having a sort of early childhood strategy. And I think that if you read this, people will see hopefully why that was a really good decision and that integrating it, not drawing arbitrary lines around things is really important and particularly important for not missing the middle years, which were a little bit missed before.
Thank you, councillor. Any other further speakers to the item? No. Okay, councillor Greco, I'll go back to you.
Thank you, mayor. And first of all, I'd like to thank the officers for the preparation of this report. I know that a lot of work has got into it, and I know that we've had a lot of engagement with the officers in the preparation and the framing of this report, which I think is really great and really important. I think one of the central tenets of this report, which really needs to be underlined, is that council's not going to be the only doer in this space, but is actually going to collaborate with a lot of stakeholders that operate in the space of youth affairs. But council will play a leadership role, together with other organisations, in ensuring that the wide scope that impacts on young people is catered for as best as possible within our city. Often, young people is an area that council not ignores, but perhaps deserves to pay a little bit more attention to. Because if you look at the statistics, demographics, young people up to the age of 25 form quite a sizable part of our community, so that they need attention. Sometimes that part of our community does not have the voice that they should have. So this report goes towards addressing that. The other point that I would make is that during the conversations that we've had with officers, certain important issues, and I believe they're important, often silent issues in our community have been picked up, like the issue of racism, which is an ever-growing issue, it's becoming uglier and uglier in our society. So that's an issue that I understand that officers have focused their minds on. And finally, I'd like to say, this is a draft policy, I'm really looking forward to the community consultation and what comes back to us, so that we can further refine it and put it into a better shape possibly than it is now. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Greco. I'd also like to close off the debate by really commending the strategy to Jo and the team and the work that's been done so far. It felt like a real privilege to be part of this stakeholder consultation, but also particularly with you jury members and hear how things are for them growing up in Darabin. I was really struck by how it does genuinely seem harder for someone who's 20 years old now than it was when I was 20. So climate change, cost of living, moving out of home, like it all just seems a little bit harder. And I'm really pleased that through this consultation, we heard from young people about exactly how they're feeling. And I think for me, there's other things that maybe council should think about advocating for, such as increasing rent assistance, youth allowance, et cetera. And I was also particularly noticed that there's issues with getting to school, so active transport and walking and cycling safely. So I think there's a lot for us to focus on, not just through this strategy, but also throughout council's work. So I'll close the debate there, and councillors, I will put the item to the vote. All those in favour? That is carried in anonymously. Thank you. So we'll go to 9.4, which is Thornbury High School kindergarten on school site opportunity to lease. And councillors, do you have any questions of the officers? Oh, sorry, I'll just wait for Vanessa to leave the room. Thank you. Councillors, do we have any questions of officers about this item? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I did have a question, and I apologise before for jumping the gun on this. My question is, I'd like to know through you, mayor, to our officers, in relation to community managed not-for-profit centres and ones that are not community managed, that are either not-for-profit or for-profit, how many in the sector of the not-for-profit or the private-run centres, how many of them have or do they have any parent-run committees of management to cater for those community centres?
Through you, mayor. Jo, thank you for the question, councillor. I am not aware of how many, but having, I wouldn't be able to answer specifically. But having a parent advisory group of some sort or another is certainly common, particularly in the not-for-profit early years management services, such as uniting or Kids First, et cetera. Making sure that there's a parent guardian voice in the management through an advisory group to the EY, Early Years Management Committee. I'm not sure about the private sector, but I would imagine that that would be the case as well. Having input from those who use the services is a common expectation.
Thank you. Have you got a further question, councillor Greco?
Yeah, just a supplementary question to that, so that we are clear. Could I just, for the benefit of councillors and also the community, could we just get a bit of an understanding of what the difference, the substantive difference between a community-run childcare centre to a private centre or a not-for-profit centre that only has an advisory committee? Can I get an understanding of what the substantive difference would be between the two in terms of decision-making power and authority over the centre?
You can, councillor Greco, but I would just caution that you should be asking questions that do relate directly to the report. But Jo, would you like to respond?
Through you, mayor. Community managed early years services usually refer to those who are run by volunteer committees. Early years management services often are not-for-profit, can also be a collective of, of a number of kindergartens operating and being registered as a management service and receive those grants. But generally speaking, that's the difference. Community managed are managed by volunteer committees who are parents or linked to the service, individual service, and EYMs are not-for-profit services. And then obviously commercial by private operators.
Thank you, Jo. Are there any further questions on this item? No. Okay. Councillors, do I have a mover of the item? I did see councillor Rennie's hand first. Councillor Rennie, are you moving the officer's recommendation?
I am. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. And do I have a second for the item? Councillor McCarthy. Councillor Rennie, would you like to speak to the item?
Yes, thank you, mayor. It's very exciting that the state government is investing money in constructing an additional kindergarten on the grounds of Thornbury High School. I think this is a fabulous model, and this will be an asset that is much valued by our community and provides much-needed additional kinder places, which will enable the state to deliver on its commitment to universal three-year-old kinder. An opportunity has been offered to council to take on the lease of this and then be the leaseholder and sublet to a kindergarten service. This would, in terms of the initial proposal, result in quite considerable additional costs to council. What the motion before us tonight does is say that we would only entertain taking on the lease and then subletting to a not-for-profit community-run provider if we were able to do so on a cost-neutral basis. And I fully support that. I think that we are not in a financial position to take on the financial burden associated with running a, with taking on a lease only to sublet. It also seems to me that that's just double handling of a lease, and in fact, why would you do two leases when you could do one? The outcome in terms of the kinder being provided to the Darabin community is likely to be exactly the same. It could be the education department leasing to a not-for-profit kinder provider, or it could be council leasing to a not-for-profit kind provider, noting that community-run kinders are not-for-profit kinders, they're a subset of those. So I'd really like to thank the staff for thinking about this issue and thinking about how to get a great outcome. We all want to see these kinder places delivered as soon as possible. Nothing in our decision tonight will impact on the timing in terms of the delivery of the build for this new kinder. And as I said, that is a fantastic outcome for our community.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Councillor McCarthy, would you like to speak as second?
I'll reserve my right, mayor.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak in opposition to the motion? Councillor Greco?
Mayor, you did not have an amendment that I'd like to...
Thank you, councillor Greco. Have you circulated the amendment?
Could we have the amendment appear, which is my alternate motion, which is now considered to be as an amendment?
Councillor Greco, have you circulated the amendment?
Sorry, I didn't hear that?
Have you circulated the amendment?
Yes, I have, yes.
What time?
Let me check. Mayor Newton, it was circulated to officers, to the CEO at Governance Services and to some of our senior executive. Unfortunately, it was not circulated to councillors, so I will circulate it now.
Is there a reason why it wasn't circulated to councillors, councillor Greco?
Because I circulated it to the officers, thinking that it would be forwarded on to the councillors, mayor Newton.
Okay, that's not common practice. If you could forward it to us now, that would be great. Thank you.
Could I ask officers to circulate it, or do you want me to circulate it? Whichever is easier for you guys.
Through you, mayor, I can circulate it for you, councillor Greco. I've got it in front of me. Okay, new email. Yeah, you won't want to, maybe five minutes just to read it, or you want to just push on, it's up to you. Yeah, maybe. Maybe have a toilet break, we've got plenty of time. Yeah. Yeah, that'd be good, good practice. I'm sending it now.
Okay. So as this amendment has not been circulated with councillors until this moment, what we'll do is, we'll actually adjourn the meeting for five minutes, just so the councillors have a chance to read the amendment. But also if anyone needs to take a toilet break or anything like that. So I'll adjourn the meeting at 7.48. If councillors, if you could come back at 7.53, please. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll send the version that's in red, oh, sorry.
councillor Lawrence, do you want to just check your sound?
I can.
You can hear us, great.
I can hear and see you now, so that's terrific.
Thank you councillor Lawrence, we can hear you too. A big thanks to the staff for getting that sorted so quickly. So we will restart the meeting at 8:17pm. Councillor Greco, I was just wondering if I could just get an understanding of what the changes to your amendment would mean.
Mayor, I'm happy to explain that. I'm hoping that councillors would have had an opportunity to read it given that we had a long break, given the power outage. But the substantive change is basically point number 10, which on my amendment, which basically says that rather than setting preconditions for the negotiations with the Department of Education, that we actually see what better outcomes we can achieve with them, given that they've already demonstrated some flexibility to do so. So that's the substantive change between my amendment and the substantive motion.
Okay, thank you councillor Greco. Would we be able to get councillor Greco's proposed amendments on screen please? Thank you. So, I'm sorry, I've just lost track. So mover was councillor Rennie and second-
It's the mover, that's not acceptable to me, so we can debunk it.
Thank you, and the second was councillor McCarthy, okay. Councillor Greco, that's not acceptable to the mover and the second, so you'll be moving that as amendment. Do I have a second for councillor Greco's amendment? Councillor Dimitriades, councillor Greco, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Thank you mayor, and thank you to the second for supporting my amendment. Look, basically councillors, what my amendment does is that it acknowledges that this is a great opportunity for council to extend its network of community managed and not-for-profit kindergartens in our city. And also it's an opportunity to show some good faith in negotiations with the Department of Education, and to maintain our role in delivering quality, and I emphasise that point, quality of kinder reforms in our city. The... Why is this important councillor? I think it's important to give some background. Why is it important that community managed, not-for-profit kinder services provide a high quality of service that is recognised in the sector? And it's also evidenced by the exceeding rating that these centres achieve. Just amongst our 18 centres in our city, 11 of those 18 centres achieve the highest rating in terms of the quality of the service that they provide. My belief is, and I think the statistics will bear this out, that the for-profit sector and the not-for-profit sector, compared to community-run centres, do not have the same level of quality outcome as our centres do, or centres that are run by parents. What's important is that we have an opportunity to actually extend that. So, you know, with us engaging with the Department of Education and supporting and to establish a community-run centre, would it give parents direct say over the management of the centre? These are volunteers, these are their own children, where they have a direct say over the life of the centre. And it's amazing to see how volunteers, that come from all walks of life, can produce an outcome that far exceeds what perhaps the for-private sector does, or the not-for-private sector does. So we should celebrate that, we should extend that, we should take that opportunity to promote that. And so that's why I'm saying that we need to really negotiate in good faith with the Department of Education. Here is an opportunity where they will provide the overall, the substantial funds to establish these centres, and therefore us to come in and support them. The other point that I would make, the other point that I would make is that it will provide council greater leverage over community centres in relation to achieving social equity outcomes. Why is that so? Because the council has a stake in what they do, and therefore we can actually encourage that these centres deliver in relation to vulnerable communities, and also council's overall strategy. We just spoke a moment ago about the importance of early childhood education in young people.
That's time.
This is a demonstration of it, thank you.
Thank you councillor Greco. Councillor Dimitriades, would you like to speak to the amendment?
I'll reserve my right.
Sure. Would anyone like to speak in opposition to the amendment? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you. I'm voting against this amendment because I think it's ill-defined and ill-conceived. It seeks a better outcome from negotiations but doesn't really define what that is, and I'm concerned at the elimination of point two, which notes the lifecycle costs. I think this is a reduction in transparency. The motion as it stands is extremely transparent about what the cost would be if council taking on the lease, and I can't think for any reason why we would take this information out of the public record if we proceeded with this amendment. At the moment, the advice we have is that should council take on the lease, the lifecycle cost over 20 years of that would be about 1.25 million. A better outcome would be 1 million. Would we accept that? An even better outcome would be 600,000. Sounds better. A good outcome might be 200,000, but that's still a cost to council. At what point is a better outcome the outcome that we're seeking? And I think that goes to the point of this being poorly defined. There's also a supposition that should council have the lease, we'd end up with a community-based childcare centre run by volunteer parents as opposed to a not-for-profit childcare centre. Both of these models are legitimate models that deliver quality kindergarten to children in our community. Increasingly, it's very difficult to find parents willing to take on the role of being a volunteer committee of management. Not-for-profit centres can deliver exceptional care, and they do that because they're run by organisations that have the community's best interests first and foremost among their list of priorities. So I really support the motion that was proposed to us by the staff. I don't think that council should go into an open-ended kind of negotiation without knowing what it is we're negotiating. If the Department of Education really doesn't want to manage a lease, if they are coming to us and saying, 'we don't want to do it, can you do it?', then that is a service I would expect them to pay for. Otherwise, it's a blatant cost transfer from the state government to local council. We already experience significant cost shifting in this area, and council will still have the ability to maintain influence and be part of a really positive kinder system because if the Department of Education manages this lease and engages a not-for-profit or community-based centre, council can still manage the child, the allocation of kinder places through the joint central kinder waiting list and allocation system, and that is a fantastic way for council to get the equity impacts that we are after. So I urge all councillors to vote against this unclear and unnecessary amendment, and to stick with the officer's recommendation, which has been put together by experts who actually understand the implications of the decision we're making tonight.
Thank you councillor Rennie. Are there any further speakers to the amendment? Councillor Lawrence, did you want to speak to the amendment?
Yeah, I'm just-
You're just sideways, but we can hear you, so go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I've just lost that connection. Look, I've just been trying to notify you-
It's all good, we can hear you.
-for iTunes, can you hear me?
We can hear you, loud and clear, councillor Lawrence, please go ahead.
Yeah, I was just trying to notify officers or councillors that I'd like to see the actual amendment. Now, I did indicate that I'm working on an iPhone, so I needed it sent to another email. Now, I'm noting also that, you know, basically this motion of cost shifting, or whatever you want to call it, has been, you know, put together and with no respect to decision-makers here. Now, I'm not going to be abstaining because it's totally unreasonable that I'm not supplied a printed copy of what you're talking about, especially given that I've got experience in doing joint facilities with state governments. There's a lot of complex things that have actually been discussed here that are not being discussed, and this is not a way to deal with a major 20-year decision.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. Have we got any further speakers to the item? No, okay, councillor Dimitriades, I'll go to your second.
Thank you mayor, I'll be supporting councillor Greco's amendment for a number of reasons. Firstly, council has committed to being an active partner with the Department of Education in delivering much-needed kindergartens to our municipality, and this project in particular is fabulous. It's going to be built in an area that's been identified as not having enough kindergartens to meet community needs, and at a time when the demand for community managed kindergarten services is at an all-time high, this amendment ensures council will play an active role in this new facility in Thornbury, which will provide 99 additional kinder places in an area of need. This project will improve access to kindergartens for many families in the community, and we should be a part of it. In response to councillor Rennie's comment previously that it's a financial burden on council to run this kindergarten, I'd like to note that council as an organisation exists for the benefit of the community. Broadly speaking, council's job is to provide services for the community and expend money for community benefits. Council is not a private entity and/or a company seeking to make profits. Therefore, it is unrealistic in my opinion and morally wrong to put an ultimatum to the Department of Education that if they don't meet our requirements, for instance, of producing a cost-neutral position, we will reject their important proposal to manage the new Thornbury kindergarten despite it having significant community benefits. This is not what we should be negotiating, and we cannot expect the Department of Education to agree with all our demands. As noted in the report, these new kindergarten projects are generally a cost-effective way for council to meet unmet demands from community managed kindergarten services because the construction costs of the new kindergarten places are covered by the Department of Education. Therefore, I'm in full support of council taking on this lease for the benefit of the community.
Thank you councillor Dimitriades. So we'll go to the vote on councillor Greco's amendment. All those in favour? Councillor Dimitriades and councillor Greco, all those against? That's councillor Hadding, councillor Rennie, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Newton, and all those abstaining. Councillor Lawrence, thank you. That amendment is lost. Are there any further speakers to the substantive item?
Mayor Newton-
I'm sorry, councillor Greco, did you want to speak to the item?
You're calling for further speakers in relation to the substantive motion?
Yes, would you like to speak?
Yeah, Mayor Newton, I just want to ask whether I could move another amendment.
Let me check governance advice.
And-
Yes, you may. Have you circulated the amendment councillor Greco?
Well, it's part of the previous amendment that I put, it's just one component of it.
Let me check governance advice on that-
Yeah, sure.
-because I don't believe you can put up something that hasn't passed for six months, but let me double-check. Councillor Greco, which part of your amendment that failed do you want to re-put?
If we refer it to my amendment, it would be item number 10.
So you want to re-prosecute item 10? So where it says, 'request the CEO to advise Department of Education that council is amenable to negotiating a change to lease terms?'.
And if I may, Mayor Newton, just to, where it says 'a better outcome' on the third line, and it goes on to 'cost neutral', a better outcome and as close as possible to cost neutral.
Thank you, I'll just see governance advice. Thank you, I'll just see governance advice. You can move that amendment. Could you send the words to Oh, sorry, we'll get the words up.
As close as possible to cost neutral.
Just so councillor Lawrence, I hope you can see the screen. And for anyone at home, so I'll just read out five with this proposed amendment. So, "Request the CEO to advise DE that unless council are able to negotiate a change to standard lease terms where council is able to achieve a better outcome which is as close to possible, as possible to a cost-neutral position." Is that correct, councillor Greco? Thank you, is that acceptable to the mover and the second? No, okay, do you have a second for your amendment? Councillor Demetriades, councillor Greco, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Thank you, may Newton, and thank you councillor Demetriades again. Look, councillors, I really feel that this is a really crucial and important issue. The previous item, we discussed youth services across our city from zero to 25, and we're making a huge commitment towards that. And that was just a policy discussion, which is great. Here is where the rubber hits the road. And this actually demonstrates what council is going to do. So the amendment that I am putting is actually leaving the door open with the Department of Education to sit down with us and to see whether we can negotiate a mutually acceptable income. We have, as the department has demonstrated, some flexibility. We should also demonstrate some flexibility and some good faith in entering into the negotiations. You can't enter into negotiations with a preconceived position that you would know that it would be completely not acceptable to the other party. And we can make it known, obviously, that that would be our preferred outcome. But we would like to sit down with the department and see whether we can creatively reach a mutually satisfying outcome. Councillors, why is this important? Look, you could take an accounting perspective on this, and I've got an accounting background and I understand figures and the numbers. And when you look at it purely from an accounting perspective, you say, yeah, it doesn't fit the bill. But this is more than an accounting exercise. We're talking about quality kindergarten services. We have a proven model that achieves exceeding ratings. 11 of our 18 centres, that's the model. It gives parents direct say over the management of their centre and also the management of the children in those centres. What better model can you ask for? That usually those sort of models fall over, don't provide the best quality service. But that model, democratic, direct, provides the best outcome for the children. We should not be looking at this and causing the children to be in the crossfire between state government and council. What we should be focusing on is what is the best outcome for the kids of Darabin? The best outcome, proven, proven, is a community-managed model that is supported by council. The evidence is there for us to see. And I think the report did not play that aspect high enough in terms of talking about what is it that we want to achieve?
That's time.
If I could have a few more minutes, I noticed the councillor
You could have 10 more seconds. You could have 10 more seconds, councillor Greco. You've spoken for three minutes.
So, look, I really urge councillors to not look at this ideologically and think that council should not be involved in such a process and that we should put our money where our mouth is and support our kids and continue to provide the best quality kindergarten services that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Would the second elective speak to the amendment?
I'll reserve my right, thank you.
Sure. Would anyone like to speak in opposition to the amendment? Councillor Rennie?
Thank you, mayor. It's disappointing that councillor Greco hasn't respected the previous vote that's been taken on this issue. I think that this is just semantics and playing with words. It's still poorly defined. What does "as close as possible to cost neutral" mean? Does it mean that it's okay if it costs us 50,000, 100,000, 200,000? It makes it almost impossible for our staff to go into a negotiation. Make no mistake, Darabin council supports quality kindergarten and we are investing millions of dollars in building new kinder places, which is a sign of this council's commitment to assisting the state government to live on its promise to universal for-year-old kindergarten. That is what we all want. It is also incorrect to state that the pathway to community-based kinder is for council to run it. The state government, if they are managing the site, will go out to the community and ask for interest from community and not-for-profit centres. And they will select the very best provider that can deliver the very best quality. And there is every chance that will be a community centre. It is equally possible, should council manage the lease, we could go out to the community and ask for community and not-for-profit providers. And we might find that the best tenderer to deliver the service is a not-for-profit provider delivered by a large not-for-profit organisation. So there is no one pathway that guarantees the outcome councillor Greco wants, which is a community-based childcare centre. My kids went to a community-based kinder, as did the children of many people here. That is not guaranteed anymore by this outcome. What is guaranteed is that council will end up having to spend more money. And every dollar we spend managing a facility that has been built and is the responsibility of the state government is a dollar that we won't spend implementing some other part of the child, youth and family strategy, which we've talked about earlier. We know that we're under-resourced, we know we are ambitious and have very many things to do. And the way for us to achieve all of the things that we have in our strategy is to make sure that our dollars are available to be spent there.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Other further speakers to the amendment? Oh, sorry, councillor Lawrence, please go ahead.
Yeah, look, this is quite a complex model that's been put forward, notwithstanding the need for cost neutrality. We've been engaged with state government many times in building and spending millions of dollars on school projects. Reservoir High is one, Ruthven Primary was another. And we did that in the in the past because of unwillingness to invest capital works in public open space and in sports centres above Bell Street. Those relationships are very complex. Even when we put millions in, you know, the place was falling apart and we couldn't get access to actually fix it. So when we go into a bureaucracy and then we're going to become a leaseholder, sandwiched in between, it's a bit of a repeat of some of the safe-seat strategies that have gone on where we lease assets of the state government who should be investing in it, and they transfer maintenance cost to us. Make no mistake, this proposal, and I can understand why people have been reluctant to share it with me, this proposal shifts ongoing costs in the childcare area, in the kindergarten, in the childcare area, onto the whole council, which will limit us in the delivery in north of the city. So again, this uniqueness and exceptionalism for projects below Bell Street has to stop. And needs to be considered in the council-wide budget. And that's why officers have been very prudent custodians of the community interest here in not buying into a lease of an asset we don't own with a service that we won't run to add cost to an area where we need to expand above Bell Street. So that's why I'm butting against this.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence, yes confirming you're against. Have I got any further speakers to this item? No, okay, councillors, I'll put that amendment to the vote. Oh, sorry, councillor Demetriades, would you like to speak a second? Apologies.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Just briefly, I wanted to say that I am supporting this because it provides us a bit more leeway to actually have a good negotiation with the state, with the Department of Education, ensuring that better outcomes, which is as close to possible as a cost-neutral position, gives us a bit more freedom to explore and negotiate in good faith. I also wanted to reiterate that council exists for the benefit of the community and we should take pride in that and not pigeonhole ourselves in these sort of negotiations based on a cost-neutrality position that won't let us explore better outcomes for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Demetriades. I now put this amendment to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Demetriades, councillor Greco, all those against. That's councillor Hanning, councillor Rennie, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Lawrence, councillor Newton. That amendment has failed, so we'll go back to the substantive item. Are there any further speakers on the substantive item? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I really need to express my disappointment that my amendment did not get up. Just in relation to the substantive motion that we have before us, I will be abstaining from the vote. One encouraging thing in the motion is that a report will be coming back to council. And all I can say is that I hope officers take on board the debate that's occurred here tonight and hopefully try to achieve the best possible outcome in regards to the Department of Education. Councillors, we're viewing this in terms of a cost, an accounting cost. Again, councillors, I need to stress that, as has been mentioned by certain councillors, that most councillors that I've come across have always put their children in community-managed centres. Why is that? Obviously, because the quality of those centres speaks for themselves. The ratios that they maintain per room and overall in the centres between instructors and children is quite significant compared to either the not-for-profit sector or the profit sector. And so, and also we know, councillors, that early childhood education is probably the number-one issue that is life-changing or a major determinant in children's development. So we should not see it as a cost, but we should see it as an investment in relation to our children. We don't see dealing with the environment as a cost. We see that as an investment in regards to saving the planet, and I'm all for that. In relation to children, that's what we should be doing. And that the services that are provided and the model that's there, that's a proven model, should be propagated and extended and form part of our 18 community-run childcare centres here in Darabin. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Were there any further speakers on this item?
I'd like to speak in favour of the substantive.
Yes, go ahead, councillor Lawrence.
Yes, I thank councillors for debating this issue. And there's obviously an incredible development to have that capital works going into the Thornbury area. However, with having been treated to some false comparisons here because the officer's motion and in fact the actions invested by the state government do not preclude community-run centres. The state government can engage with them and I would have thought they would, you know, do that. Sandwiching the council in as a leaseholder over assets it doesn't own and the assets that can be very difficult to access via the education department. I can speak from experience on that in terms of this sports stadium on Plandy Road is not something council should go into. We still have an operational budget problem that we haven't solved. And maintenance of aging building stock in this council is a major fiscal restraint on quality services reaching the whole of the city. So I just, you know, don't think this should be brought lightly. I don't think it should be where the prioritisation is the relationship with the state government. The prioritisation should be on the outcome of quality childcare and on financial sustainability of the city of Darabin and the services we provide, which at the moment are not sustainable with many aging not-for-profit centres, many centres, not-for-profit centres in aging building stock across the city. So I think it is just opportunistic cost-shifting, maintenance, and we need to draw a line on that.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Are there further speakers to the item?
No further speakers? Okay, I might just close the debate then. So I am supportive of the substantive motion as well. I also just want to dispel a couple of myths, I believe. So I heard from councillor Greco, most councillors put their children in community-managed centres. My son goes to a private centre, councillor Greco, and it is an excellent centre. His educators are wonderful. And I really value that the span of hours is 6.30 to 6.30, so I can often go and pick him up after meetings. We're very lucky that in Darabin, our early childhood education and care services perform better than the national quality standard average across Australia. And that's for the whole suite of services within Darabin. That's community, not-for-profit and private. So I'm very tired of the debate that community is the only way for. There's no way that council could provide all of those services. So it's really important that we have good community centres, good not-for-profit and good private centres within Darabin. And I agree with councillor Lawrence that what we are seeing here is some cost shifting. So what I'm hoping going forward is that we can do some negotiations, see what might be possible. The thing that I'm interested in as well is that there's a possibility for maternal and child health centres on the site, which we can think about now or we can think about in future. So I'm really glad that that option is still on the table and we'll close off the debate there. Thank you. So councillors, I will now put this item to the vote. All those in favour? That's councillor Hanning, councillor Rennie, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Lawrence, councillor Newton, all those against. All those abstaining. Councillor Demetriades and councillor Greco. That item is passed and we will go on to item, oh yes, sorry, we'll get Vanessa back into the room.
Thank you. So we will now go on to the next report, which is 9.5 amendment C222D, "The Places of Worship: Permanent Heritage Controls". And councillors, do we have any questions of officers regarding this item? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, mayor. Look, I note that this afternoon our officers were trying to contact the planning department and they had some initial contact, I believe. Is there any update whether they've been able to establish further contact with them and sought further clarification?
Thank you. Vanessa or Chad? Or Vanessa?
Yeah. Thank you for your question, councillor Greco and through you, mayor. No, unfortunately councillor Greco, we haven't had a response yet from the Department of Transport and Planning.
Thank you. Have you got further questions, councillor Greco?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Demetriades.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I just wanted to ask about the officer's recommendation for this. Apparently in point four, it says that the decision won't, that the decision won't come back Apparently in point four it says that the decision won't, that the decision won't come back to council. It will actually be decided by officers and be sent to the minister for a final decision. Can I just get clarity on that?
Chad or Vanessa?
Thank you for the question councillor Demetriades. Through you mayor, sorry, just let me. Just to outline the process, if council resolves to proceed, we'll write to the minister and request that we start the process and there will be an exhibition period. Officers will come back to council, so we will come back to council with the results of the exhibition period and the feedback that we've received. Make a recommendation to council on what we move, on how we move forward with the exhibition after, the amendment after the exhibition period.
Thank you, Peter, would you like to add?
Through you mayor, I think the question was about point four of the resolution, which as I read it, and Mr Chad might help me here, which as I read it authorises officers or manager city futures to make alterations to the material which supports the initial request. It's not about the final decision, so point four of this resolution. I'll just get Janessa or Chad to clarify.
Apologies councillor Demetriades. That refers to only if minor alterations might need to be made to this draft amendment.
Thank you.
And through you mayor to clarify, that's not the final decision. It's actually just asking the minister to start the process, is that correct? Thank you.
Thank you, have you got further questions councillor Demetriades?
Yes, sorry, I'm sorry to ask for further clarification on that. So currently we're writing, if this passes according to the officers' recommendation, we're writing to the minister to get approval to amend the scheme and then it's going to be exhibited for four weeks. Then there's going to be changes made by officers that this will, there's going to be changes made based on the exhibition and then it'll go back to the minister before it comes back to council. So I'm just trying to work out when it's coming back to council.
Chad, would you like to answer that?
Thank you mayor, thank you for the question. In terms of, as with any planning scheme amendment, the process is that councils must first request permission from the minister for planning to commence an amendment and that is what you're being asked to do tonight. It is literally the start of a process. Should the minister grant authorisation to commence the amendment, it is exhibited for a period of at least one month. Submissions are made, they are considered and assessed and then they're reported back to council at either a planning committee or an ordinary meeting and council makes a decision on whether to refer all submissions to a independent planning panel, at which point the planning panel reconsideres, reconsideres each submission on its merits and makes a recommendation back to council, at which point council makes the final decision before, sorry, makes the penultimate decision before sending it back to the minister for planning. It is a very bureaucratic process.
Yes, thank you for that. So does that mean we should try and make point four a little bit clearer? Because the way I read it, it actually says that, and this is just the way I've read it, that the officers are writing to the minister to, for a decision to be made. And that's the bit that's kind of confused me in this process.
Through you mayor, I think it's quite clear because it talks about the material attached, which are attached to the authorisation request, which is the first stage in the process. So all four, I think you could, I think you could insert if you wanted to, to make minor or editorial alterations to give you some comfort councillor. But I think because it says prior to lodgment of the authorisation request, it's not authorising officers to just, you know, do anything else. If you wanted to be clear, you could insert the words minor in there or editorial alterations, because really I think that's the intent of clause four. This has not been moved yet, mayor and I'd be happy to make that an officers' change if that gives the council some comfort.
Thank you, I'm comfortable with that as an alternative officers' recommendation. Councillor Demetriades, do you have further questions?
Yes, thank you for that and for the clarification. I just wanted to know, the new places of worship that have been listed in this report, I think there's six of them, when were they notified that they are being considered for heritage overlay?
Vanessa? Or Chad?
Thank you for the, thank you mayor, through you. The owners and church communities were notified as soon as confirmation that this item was to be as part of the agenda, so they received notice late last week.
Thank you, that's all your questions. I'll go to councillor, actually sorry, before I go to councillor Lawrence, can I get an extension of time motion? Councillor McCarthy will extend time for half an hour and I've got councillor Greco a second. All those in favour, it's carried unanimously. Councillor Lawrence, would you like to ask your questions?
Yeah, just to clarify on the notifications, so community members have contacted me, said the notification was the 22nd of May, so would that have been correct?
Then Chad?
Thank you for the question councillor, through you mayor. There were, there was a couple of days difference. Some owners were able to be notified the day after the agenda for the meeting was published. Others were able to be notified later that week. It depended on the contact details and the method of communication. We were able to mobilise as soon, as soon as possible.
Thank you Hamish, councillor Lawrence, have you got further questions?
No, thank you, that's all.
Thank you, have I got councillor Rennie, then I'll go to councillor Greco.
Thank you mayors, through you to the officers. I wonder if they could confirm that once submissions are made, that ordinarily we would have a hearing of submissions, meeting at which community members could come and make their submissions to us in person as well as those that they might put in in writing.
Chad?
Thank you for the question, through you the mayor. Yes, I can confirm that that is the process, that should count, should this motion pass tonight, then again we would seek authorisation from the minister for planning. Notification would be given, then that would be in the form of both written notification, formal written notification, but we'd also reach out and make contact with each of the church communities and sit down with them to explain both the amendment process and the implications of a heritage overlay and invite submissions and those submissions would be considered by council at either the planning committee or an ordinary meeting.
Thank you, have you got further questions? No, councillor Greco?
Oh, thank you mayor. Look, I just wanted to pick up on the question that was asked by, in the gallery and also from what councillor Lawrence said. If the letters went out on the 22nd of May, is it usual practice to only give just a couple of days' notice to landowners in regards to council embarking on a process of a heritage overlay? Is that usual practice?
Chad?
Thank you for the question through the mayor. I think in relation to heritage amendments, there can be a variety of different approaches. So quite often for, where there is a, potentially there's a potential threat to the heritage place, immediate action is often taken and councils, that is not unusual. For other heritage amendments, there can be a period of pre-consultation. I think in relation to this matter, what has occurred is there was, it was clearly a, there was a demolition request lodged for a church. Council, you've undertaken action immediately to seek an interim overlay to protect that church and the usual practice is to both undertake an interim amendment at the same time as commencing, resolving to commence the permanent control. In this instance, officers have identified an opportunity for efficiency to identify, it became apparent that there are many other places of worship across the municipality that are not protected and quite quickly we identified an efficiency in undertaking a, if you're going to undertake an amendment to protect one place of worship, then you could protect more. And so we've acted quickly, which has precluded the opportunity for engagement. And we have seen the correspondence and that has clearly caused some concern with some church communities. But again, I'd reiterate that the item tonight is the start of an amendment process and the next part of that is an engagement process. So we will, as we do always in our engagement at Darabin, seek to sit down with each community and engage them and walk them through the process and the consequences.
Thank you Chad, councillor Greco, do you have any further questions?
Yes, I did, sorry to take up this time. So from the answer that we just received, for my, for my own clarification, there was a threat of demolition on one and we've got the process sort of moving in relation to that of expressing our intentions informally, if you like, with the minister, by the, but correct me if I'm wrong, there was no threat, is there? There was no threat of demolition in relation to the other five churches or the other five places of worship that are part of this report.
Chad?
Thank you, no, I can, we would concur, in relation to these other properties, no, there have been no applications for demolition.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy?
Thanks mayor, look, just in drawing officers and councillors' attention to the implementation timeframe outlined on page 227, I would just ask if the timeframe that is listed there is, as I understand it, an indicative timeframe based on normal practice. But can I just confirm, or just clarify through you mayor, through our officers, whether it is possible or likely that the minister may seek to provide a longer timeframe given the caretaker period and council running up against that in September or October? And should council consider, considering this matter and providing either statutory or a longer period of time, would this actually be a matter that would actually be considered in the next term for this council?
Vanessa or Chad?
Thank you councillor McCarthy and through you mayor. The key is that we do do consultation, that that doesn't extend into the caretaker period. The report sets out a month, but council could, it could, we could do for a longer period. The key is just to avoid the caretaker period and you'll see in our likely timeline, if this proceeds, that it will extend into early next year.
Thank you, councillors, I'll close, questions there. So now commence the debate. And I remind you that once we enter the debate, there'll be no further questions. Do I have a mover of the motion councillor Greco?
Mayor Newton, I have an alternate motion which has been distributed.
Thank you, what time?
I hope it hasn't been a miscommunication between myself and the officers.
So the one that was circulated at 3.50?
Yes, I believe that's the one, if it can come up on the screen, we can verify that.
So councillor Greco, is that your amendment, sorry, alternative motion that's deferring the request?
Yes, mayor.
Thank you, do you have a second for the motion? Councillor Demetriades, councillor Greco, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you mayor, look, first of all, I'd like to also thank the officers for the discussions that we had this afternoon and they have assisted in being crafted in this motion. And what this motion does, and if you look at the parts that are coloured there in red, is that the first part is actually asking for the, for this process to be deferred and asking for a deferment on the basis of, if you like, the attention that is drawn from various places of worship in our city. I've received a number of emails and tonight we also saw some people making representations in regards to that. I think the item one would enable the property owners, which are places of worship, at least to be informed of the process that council is about to embark on and like that they could also be brought up to speed of what the implications of this is, rather than only having a couple of days to come here tonight and lodge a submission in regards to council embarking on this process. The second part of the motion also deals with the issue that was raised about ensuring that there is a report back and I understand that there's a bit of consensus around that in terms of the process and that there'll probably be submissions of hearing so that the council, as a council body, as a collective body, is making decisions along the way in relation to the heritage overlay amendment. They're the two major things. I think it will really do well with our interfaith community in our city. I'd just like to remind councillors, we have an interfaith advisory committee and I'm sure that they would be keen and interested in this particular issue and it only pays certain respect to the places of worship of what this sort of process means for their premises. The initial discussion that I've had with some of them is that of course they want their churches or their places of worship to be protected. But they want to, but they also want to understand the process of what that protection means because some of them have already said to me, you know, what does the statement of significance actually mean? They probably would have to engage or understand that a little bit further in terms of does a place, I drew limitations on it. And it'd be good, I think, that if we go around, speak to them, give them a better understanding and then we embark on the process, that we would achieve a better outcome and maintain better relations with our interfaith community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Greco, councillor Demetriades, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'll reserve my right.
Sure, would anyone like to speak in opposition to the motion councillor Rennie?
Thank you mayor, I think this type of motion would set a dangerous precedent for councillors ignoring our responsibilities, our statutory responsibilities to protect heritage if and when we become aware that it may be at risk or that it may be unprotected. So in this case, it's been brought to our attention that a number of properties have heritage value and that are not currently protected. We therefore have a statutory responsibility to follow a defined set of steps and to explore fully whether the places do in fact want protection and to ask the minister firstly for permission to go out on exhibition and consult with people and then, as has been outlined, there are a number of further steps. I think there are inherent risks in this process of deferring and going out and speaking to the community less formally, partly because often people will only participate once in a consultation and if we do it less formally beforehand, the chance that they miss the more formal consultation where they actually have genuine decision-making power or, you know, contributing in a more formal way, I shouldn't say decision-making power, but are able to contribute formally in a way where their input will be taken into account, that opportunity may be lost. And so I think that we have a responsibility to inform the community of what the formal pathway is and I'd like to flag an alternate motion if this is not successful, which would be to extend the timelines for consultation to two months or six weeks if two months would take us into the caretaker period so that the additional consultation that councillor Greco was talking about is in fact made available to the community, but that every member of the community is encouraged to participate in the formal submission process. Because having an informal conversation... Because having an informal conversation with us beforehand, as is flagged by this amendment, could be detrimental to people's participation in the due process and might actually undermine their capacity to have influence.
Thank you councillor Rennie. I'm confirming you're foreshadowing a alternative motion if this motion doesn't pass.
That's correct. I'll be voting against this and foreshadow an alternative.
Thank you. Are there further speakers to the item? councillor McCarthy?
Mayor, I'll also be speaking against councillor Greco's alternative. And I welcome councillor Rennie's foreshadowed motion. I would just probably, in addition to the point that councillor Rennie has raised, probably raise another factor and another question for councillors to consider in relation to this matter, which is when we go and engage with someone in relation to a process whereby they are an interested party and we engage outside of a formal process, apart from the politeness and nicety of taking people through in, with detail about how it's going to work. And we should always take that opportunity when we can. I also think there's another question here which councillors need to consider from a governance point of view and a transparency point of view, which is to what end? To what end do you ask people or seek to gain their input in relation to a process whereby they are an interested party? Are you then providing an opportunity for them to influence the decision or the matter that you consider at your next meeting or your subsequent consideration of that matter? Either you are asking them to influence you or seek to influence you in that way? Or you're effectively engaging in what is, I think, a potentially deceptive practice, which is to give the impression of consultation, but yet proceed with the process as you always were. So I support councillor Rennie's concerns. And also would just say that council in this chamber has dealt with heritage matters on many occasions, not just in relation to items such as this, but in relation to residential heritage, in relation to heritage of an environmental nature. And in each instance, I've urged council to not engage in what I would describe as the political interference of planning processes. It is absolutely essential that we play this process as straight as we can and follow the rules and not engage in responding to what are well-meaning, but I think ultimately are influencing factors that put us at risk in our decision-making. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. Have I got any further speakers to the item? No. Okay, I'll go to councillor Tabe Travis a second time.
Thank you, mayor. I'm supporting this motion due to the many concerns we've received, both here tonight and from emails, text messages and phone calls over the weekend from the places of worship listed in this report. As we've heard, the new, the six new places of worship listed in this report received notification of council's application for heritage overlay on Wednesday afternoon, on the 22nd of May, which only gave them two business days to read the officer's report, which is over 250 pages long, to obtain advice and information, given the report is quite complex and technical, and then respond to council and somehow do a submission before tonight. Furthermore, councils were also not briefed that the six new sites of worship would be added to this report for approval tonight. The first I became aware of this was when I read the public agenda some days ago. Therefore, this amendment is calling-
Mayor, apologies. Point of order.
What is your point of order councillor?
The point of order is 10.1G is a misleading or false statement. Councillors were told last week at briefing that additional places of worship had been identified.
Thank you. Yes, I remember that briefing very well. That point of order is upheld.
Thank you, mayor. While I don't recall that, I don't recall the names of those places of worship being mentioned. I became aware of this particular, these particular places of worship only some days ago. So this amendment is calling for council to defer item 9.5 to the next public meeting in order to give sufficient time to the six new places of worship affected by this decision to accurately understand what impact this will have on them and the process involved. Because it is quite complex, as we all can see. And it also ensures that we are also fully informed of the process. While I'm certainly not opposed to heritage overlay, particularly of places of worship from different multicultural groups, as this motion, this substantive motion does suggest, I believe in the interests of procedural fairness, a deferment of this application would be appropriate to allow officers to respectfully let the places of worship know of what's happening. As from what we've heard, a lot of places are quite, are not, they just need a bit more clarity on what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tabe Travis. I'd like to just make a clarification that we were provided with a written briefing about this on the 20th of May and you'll be able to find that in the internet. Councillors, we will now put this motion to, oh, sorry councillor Greco, did you have something to say?
Yeah, mayor Newton, I think I have a right of reply, given that-
Yes, you do. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, mayor Newton. Look, I thank councillors for their contribution in relation to this debate, but I want to take up an issue. This is not about influencing, this is not about trying to, having a consultation with the affected places of worship to them influencing our officers. I don't think that's worthy of being mentioned, that should not have been mentioned. That's not the object of what this motion is. And I think it's a fairly harsh reading of what this motion is actually trying to do. What this motion is trying to do, as it says, is actually to inform our interfaith community. And many of them are from different cultural and ethnic backgrounds and to inform them about the process. So it's not asking them to, you know, what they think about the heritage overlay and the statement of significance that is being proposed. It's actually to inform them of a process that would be very foreign to many of them. And given that they've been, you know, they've been surprised by the short amount of time that they've had to actually provide a submission here tonight. There is the issue of procedural fairness. If we are to inform the community about that this is going to be discussed tonight, a little bit more time should have been given to those places of worship to prepare and to actually come tonight. Some I know could not come tonight because of the, they only had two or three days to consider this. So I just stress the point. This is not about influence, far from it. This is about being courteous to our diverse community in providing them information and explanations about the course that council will be taking in the very, very near future. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Greco. I'll now put this motion to the vote. All those in favour? councillor Tabe Travis, councillor Greco? All those against? councillor Hunning, councillor Rennie, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Newsham, councillor Lawrence? That motion is lost. councillor Rennie, did you have a foreshadowed motion you'd like to move?
I did thank you, mayor. And I have circulated a few words to the staff. They're very simple words, simply, and I've circulated them to everyone, that we would replace one month in point two with six to eight weeks. And then I put in brackets, the latter being preferred if council caretaker period permits.
Thank you.
I just want to leave some flexibility and I'll just check with the staff that that would be clear in intent.
Thank you. Vanessa, can I check that replacing one month with six to eight weeks, the latter being preferred if council caretaker period permits is acceptable?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, it would be.
Thank you. Do we have a second? councillor McCarthy? councillor Rennie, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, mayor. In relation to this motion, I think the language we use matters and it's really important that we are clear with what we are doing tonight. So we're not tonight asking for heritage overlay, asking the minister to apply heritage overlay. What we are asking for is effectively permission or that the minister authorizes us to prepare an amendment, which we could then go to the community with. And that is because there are very specific mandated processes that need to be followed. I think it's also important that we help people and we have a responsibility as councillors to help people understand what a potential heritage overlay means. And I say potential because there's no guarantee that by going down this path and getting expert advice and hearing submissions, that we actually end up with the heritage protections. But potentially, if we do end up with heritage protections, that is because an expert panel has looked at all the evidence in front of them and determined that a building or buildings wants heritage protection. It's not actually us as councillors who say, we like that building, therefore it should be protected. So I think that's firstly what's important. Secondly, it is possible to have a heritage overlay and still develop and still modify and even at times still demolish a building. What it means when there is a heritage overlay is that that heritage protection must be taken into account when any development or modification, usually to the exterior of the building, but that's part of what is determined in the heritage process, that that heritage overlay is taken into account before modifications are made to the building. And we've seen instances where that has effectively been achieved with significant building modifications, but they are done in such a way as to respect and sometimes even elevate the heritage significance of a place. You know, I remind councillors, we saw years ago a building in Station Street, Fairfield that had heritage protection and the developer was able to lift it up and move it elsewhere on the site, rather than just demolish it. So heritage protections simply require people to be a bit creative and thoughtful in how they protect the heritage. And I think that this is something that's generally very much valued by our community. So if this motion is passed tonight, I think it's really critical that we convey to all people, particularly those who are perhaps uncertain, given the surprise, that it is not a foregone conclusion what will happen, that it will become an invitation to them to participate in a process and that we welcome their full participation. And so that is something we can do and have a responsibility in fact as councillors to do in terms of this process. And so I commend this motion to everyone. I have increased the timelines because I think, taking into account what councillor Greco said about diverse communities and people not being aware of the process, that extending the timelines preferably to eight weeks will enable greater participation.
Thank you. councillor McCarthy, would you like to speak as second?
Thanks, mayor. councillor Rennie has covered it really well and I support her comments. I would also like to just make the point that the process, which should this motion succeed, that would be available to all submitters is effectively runs over a six to eight week period. That is the process and the timeframe for submissions to be made. We heard some discussion in relation to the previous motion about people having the time to make a submission. That is actually the submission process. And the reason why that's the submission process is because it is done in a way which actually enables the information and the clarity around what is proposed to be provided to everyone who is interested in the matters that are before council. It is a well-articulated process and I know most councillors have been through this process at least once and in some cases, many occasions, and are familiar with the rigour that is undertaken, as councillor Rennie described. We also have a responsibility, councillors, and I would just remind us all of the responsibilities we have as a responsible authority under the Planning and Environment Act of when there is an identification of heritage significance on buildings in our municipality, when our officers undertake their professional work and their practice work of bringing recommendations to us, it is incumbent upon us to follow those recommendations. We should ask questions. We should do so with the sort of intellectual rigor and care that I think our community expects. But I think we should also be really careful about our role here. We are not the final decision-maker in relation to heritage matters. And we've had that outlined for us and it is outlined in the report. So I endorse and support both the officer's report and also councillor Rennie's suggestion to provide additional time. I think that is absolutely reasonable and I encourage all councillors to get behind this motion and support it unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. I'll go to councillor Lawrence.
Thank you, mayor Newton. Yes, I just wanted to echo the comments made by councillor Rennie and councillor McCarthy and welcome the additional consultation period. And I should just point out, supporting this motion doesn't mean that we support a final outcome of heritage for these individual sites or the nature of that final heritage overlay. That's going to be decided through a long process. We've been through these processes before in Elphington and also in Thornbury. They're very lengthy. They do allow input from all parties. And that's, but we have a responsibility that's been outlined earlier to start the processes of assessing built heritage if we can and if we perceive there is a risk there. Unfortunately, sometimes we've been triggered to do this in other places with, because of a threat. But we should actually be proactively doing it because the faith-based built heritage of the city is significant for the whole community, not just those using them in the past or using them in the future. Okay, that's why I'm supporting the motion.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. Have I got further speakers to the motion? councillor Greco?
Thank you, mayor. Mayor, I've just circulated an amendment that I would like the mover and the second to consider. If the amendment comes up on the screen, they'll have an opportunity to have a look at it.
Thank you, mayor. I've seen that. I'm happy to incorporate that.
Yes, that's fine. councillor McCarthy, you happy to incorporate that amendment?
That's fine, mayor.
Thank you. And just for clarification, the additional point is council inform and bring this heritage overlay amendment application to the attention of the Darabin Interfaith Advisory Committee. That's now forms part of the substantive item. Do we have any further speakers to the substantive item? councillor Greco?
Thank you, mayor. Just, I'd just like to emphasise that the mandated process is not in question here, councillors. I'm just surprised our councillors are sort of moving into that space about as if this is something that we're questioning, the mandated process. That's unquestionable. I mean, I not even, not even want to go there. We've been through these processes before and we know what the processes are and how important they are. So it's not a question of, again, influencing or trying to change or the framing of what's being proposed.
Councillor Greco, I'm so sorry. I'll just get you to pause. We need to do an extension of time. So councillor McCarthy to move, councillor Greco to second. All those in favour? Thank you. That's carried unanimously. councillor Greco, please go ahead. Sorry.
All that I think that we really need to do and I'm hoping that this, through this motion, that we could show some respect and courtesy to these places of worship. Also, I note that, you know, point number five talks about the, I think it's that point, there was a point there about the, to protect against demolishing, demolition. And I think that that provides a certain amount of protection. Also, I'd like to point out that one of the places of worship that did contact me was the Preston Mosque. The Preston Mosque, as we all know, is the premier mosque in the state of Victoria. As a result of that, we have an MOU with the Preston Mosque. Part of that MOU is actually to share information and to have, and to ensure that there's a proper flow of information between the council and the mosque as a way of maintaining good relations. So the intent has been, is that how do we do that? How do we ensure that respectful and courteous relationship with such an important institution here in our city, which we should all feel very proud that they are housed in our city? So I welcome what councillor Rennie has said about the extension of time, but I'm disappointed that we weren't able to have that engagement with the places of worship before this actually came to council. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Greco, can I confirm, are you speaking for or against the item?
Mayor, I still have to make up my mind.
Okay, thank you. Can I, do you have any further speakers? No further speakers? Okay, councillor, councillor Rennie, do you? I actually don't know whether I can give you a right reply.
I won't exercise it, so that'll mean you won't have to make a wall.
No problem. Just to close debate, I'll just say that I am supporting the motion. And I think the important part for me is that this is really the start of the process. So people from various parts of our community will have the opportunity to comment and be part of this process in the next six to eight weeks. And just please be mindful of that. We want to hear from you. And just please be mindful of that. We want to hear from you. And I think let's get going. So we'll close the debate there and councillors, I'll put the item to the vote. All those in favour? That's councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor Greco, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Newtton, councillor Lawrence, all those against. And all those abstaining, councillor Demetriades, that motion is passed. So I will go to, there's no items to be tabled. I'll go to item 11, notices of motion. And just conscious that we've got 27 minutes to go and two notices of motions. So we can't spend more than about 13 minutes or so on this item. So we'll go to, we'll go to 11.1, future decisions regarding Two Wing Grove Street, Elphington. Councillor Demetriades, do you wish to move the motion?
Sorry, sorry, ma'am. Before you commence with that matter, I need to declare a conflict of interest. I've already handed in my form to the officers, but it's a conflict of interest by virtue of my employment, so.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. I'll just wait for you to exit the room. We'll just pause. Thank you. councillor Demetriades, do you wish to move the motion?
Yes, I'm just waiting for it to go on the screen.
Sure. And do we have a second up for this motion? Councillor Greco, councillor Demetriades, please go ahead.
I stand tonight to raise this motion for acceptance by all councillors about the future decision of Two Wing Grove Street in Elphington, since there has been ongoing public interest in this site as well as concerns regarding confidential decisions and questions from the public about transparency. My understanding of what has occurred at this site over the past few years is briefly as follows. And so it began in November 2020 when council entered Two Wing Grove Street in Elphington to remove 14 traders from the site. Then in December 2022, VCAT ruled the businesses could re-enter the site. On the 25th of January 2023, upon the reported recommendation from officers, council delegated authority to the CEO to determine the short to medium term uses of Two Wing Grove Street, Elphington. And since this delegated power of the CEO, and since, sorry, this delegated power of the CEO has been in place. In light of these events, community members have continued to raise concerns even until today. And I'm quite surprised by the enormous amount of questions that were asked here today concerning this site. And it's still questions about transparency, accountability, particularly, yeah, about what's going on in the future. So therefore, I've raised this motion to ensure that the future decision of the Two Wing Grove Street site are made publicly by council and not under delegation. This would mean that members of the public will be fully informed of any decisions made about the site, particularly in relation to the key stages of developing a master plan of the site. And council would avoid any potential reputational damage of being perceived as not being transparent with decisions, actions or information if this was to pass tonight. So I encourage all councillors to vote in favour of this motion. And I remind everyone of our obligations under the Local Government Act, as well as Darabhan's public transparency policy, that transparency of council decisions, actions and information must be ensured. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll go to councillor Greco as second up.
Thank you, Mayor Newton. I reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
Have we got any further speakers to the item? councillor Hannon?
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to propose an amendment to this motion. I've circulated that today.
Thank you. Can we get that on screen, please? Councillor Hannon, is that your amendment?
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Is that acceptable to the mover and the second up?
No, sorry, ma'am, but I'd like to raise that this is against the, it's directly opposite to the motion. So the motion is to-
Let me speak governance advice.
Thank you.
It's okay. Yep. I have sought governance advice, councillor Demetriades, and the amendment is not opposite to your motion.
Sorry, ma'am. Can I just seek clarification? Because it's about the first bit of the, that the decisions are made under delegation. So it's not about the second point. It's about the first point, that this whole motion is about decisions coming to council. It's in the intent of the motion as well. And if it's not coming to council by removing that it is made under delegation, then it's against the motion.
This is a debate. I'm not sure we have debates on points of order. If there is a debate, I'd like to put my side, but I don't believe we do have debates.
Thank you councillor Hannon. So- So councillor Demetriades, the way that I read the amendment is it doesn't flip the motion on its head. So because it says directs that future decisions related to short, mid and long term use of Two Wing Grove Street be recorded to council meetings for decision as follows. So removing rather than being made under delegation does not flip the motion on its head. It just removes that part.
But then that's already what we're doing anyway. So we're already getting reports on this. So then it goes to the other point of the motion that it's an-
Councillor Demetriades, I've made a ruling on this and I do not accept that this amendment is opposite to your motion.
But then would you accept that this motion is actually unnecessary because the amendments are necessary?
You're entering debate.
Sorry, I've got another question to ask. Because one of the rules in the governance rule says that it can't be exactly the same as, it can't be an irrelevant amendment. So it has to be relevant. So we're already receiving reports.
Councillor Demetriades, you're asking a question about whether the amendment is relevant and which governance rule are you referring to?
I'll just find it. Thanks. Thank you, ma'am. It's section 3.31D, that it's irrelevant to what's being considered because we already get reports about decisions, the short, medium term decisions.
So the amendment is removing the term rather than being made under delegation? And this notice of motion is about removing delegation from the CEO to council? So it's not irrelevant. It's relevant. Councillor Demetriades, I've made a ruling that this is relevant. So we'll move on. Do you accept the amendment?
No, sorry, I don't accept this amendment.
Thank you. Councillor, do we have a second up for the amendment? Councillor Rennie? Councillor Hannon, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, so this motion is about transparency and I welcome that. We've had quite a lot of talk about transparency even today, let alone in many of the meetings. We've just today released items that were previously made confidential. We have had quite an extended discussion about the very serious way that this council treats matters of probity and transparency, particularly on this item. Undoubtedly, there's been a lot of community interest in this site and getting the best use for the community. And I really thank the many people who've asked questions or expressed views on that. I was really glad that we were able to fit into the draft budget additional budget to go to the next stage of feasibility and master planning. And I really look forward to continuing the community input on this site. My amendments are quite simple. There's just two, which I'll address quickly. The first is to take out the words, as you see there, rather than being made under delegation. And to address councillor Demetriades's point there, I'm not changing the fact that these significant items should come to council meetings for decision. They have in the past and they should in future. I'm very supportive of that. My only reason of saying not under delegation is because there, in some cases, there's very good reasons why we may want to do, make decisions under delegation. There may just be practical reasons. There may be, you know, we have a split of council having a role and strategy and governance of these kinds of decisions in asset and property management, not in an operational role. And some decisions, it's hard to predict now, but we want to leave, we don't want to unnecessarily restrict ourselves. And some decisions may be best made. It'll come to us, it will come to us for decision. But we can either make a decision or we can delegate that decision. And there's no reason for us at this point to limit ourselves from having that power. The second point is just to take out the reference to conclusion of leases or licences. So this is in keeping with current practice across the, excuse me, the whole of the municipality. It is expected and it is a practice that significant leases and licences come to council for decision. But, you know, they generally go for years. They, at the end point, they're sometimes subject to negotiation on short term extensions or on terms, which, again, are often operational matters and just don't need to come to this council. If we did apply this across the whole of the municipality, we'd have an awful lot of extra decision making unnecessarily coming to us. We, you know, we don't need to use our time in that way. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hannon. councillor Rennie, would you like to speak as second up?
Mayor Newton, if I may.
Thanks.
When this amendment was put up, there was no question asked about whether councillors had any questions in relation to the amendment. And so I just really got a pressing question that I need to ask about the amendment.
We're on the notice of motion, councillor Greco, but what is your question?
Yeah, the question is, I'm just trying to understand the difference between this motion and the, and the difference between this amendment and the motion that was put forward by councillor Demetriades. So I'm just looking at the language there and I'm a bit confused of what the substantive differences are.
Rachel, did you want to add anything or not?
You're seeking clarity on the substantive difference between the two versions? Yep. So my, the way we would implement the change to clause seven, whether it's there or not, is it would have no effect to how we treated it. So whether it's included or not is not a substantive matter. Certainly at point A, removing conclusion of leases or licences would mean that any terms of, under which you might consider an extension of a lease or a licence, they'd be established when the lease or licence is set and then officers would implement those in line with what was said at that time.
Thank you. Rachel, councillor Rennie, would you like to speak as second up?
I'll reserve. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers to the amendment? No, okay. Councillors, I'll put the amendment to the vote. All those in favour? It's councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor Williams, councillor Lawrence and councillor Newtton, all those against. Councillor Demetriades and councillor Greco, that amendment is passed. That's now the substantive item. Would anyone like to speak to the item, the substantive item? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, ma'am. If I've understood correctly, then the, and I'll be speaking against this substantive motion. Because if I've understood correctly, what this substantive motion does is that it doesn't provide the full transparency that one would expect on an issue of this magnitude or of this importance to the community. As we saw tonight, there were 13 questions that were asked tonight. I haven't seen a string of questions like that for a long time. I mean, that's a symptom of that the community may not be clear or is unsure. And it affects the, if you like, the trust between the council and the community and the building of relationships between the council and the community. As we all know and we all acknowledge, the people that ask the questions here tonight are highly respected. They do a lot of work, particularly in the space of improving our local environment. And so, and so I think it's only, again, respectful that we provide as much transparency as we can. We're talking about public land and public interest. And I think there should be public transparency around that issue. The importance of that is that it would alleviate, I believe, and I've seen this happen in other cases, it actually alleviates a lot of doubling up, duplication, unnecessary time that's been occupied by questions. It actually helps to alleviate all that and provides a clear path in relation to how we make a decision in this. What's not in question is not so much the decision that we'll finally land on in regards to this particular matter, but it's the process. And we want a truly transparent process that enables a community to have trust and faith in how decisions are made here openly and publicly by the council. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Greco. So we've heard from the mover and the second up. Have we got any further speakers to the substantive item before we finish? councillor Rennie?
Thanks, ma'am. I'll be very brief. I think it is really important to reiterate that what this motion does do is it makes it very clear that future decisions related to short, medium and long term use of the site must come to council for decision. Those include decisions relating to future leases and the establishment of new leases and licences, decisions about the key stages of work towards master planning. And that's really important because we know how much the community is really interested in master planning at this site. And I think that that, notwithstanding what councillor Greco has said, that is the take home message for the community about this motion tonight is this is a motion that makes it very clear that council are the decision makers and that makes the staff aware also, and I know the staff are very on board with this, that these decisions must and will come to council.
Thank you councillor Rennie. Are there any further speakers to the item? Councillor Demetriades, you've already spoken. You were the mover of the motion.
So don't I have a right of reply?
Actually, that's a good question. I think if there's an amendment that's supported, then there's no right of reply. But I'll double check. Councillor Demetriades, there's no right of reply on an amended motion. Are there any further speakers? No, okay. Councillors, we'll put that item to the vote. All those in favour? That's councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor Williams, councillor Lawrence, councillor Newtton, all those against. Councillor Demetriades, all those abstaining. Councillor Greco, how are you voting? Against. Okay, so I'll just clarify that vote. So it was councillor Hannon, so I'll just count the vote again. So just so I'm super clear. So all those in favour? Councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor Williams, councillor Lawrence, councillor Newtton, all those against. Councillor Demetriades and councillor Greco, thank you. That motion is passed. And we'll go on to the final item, 11.2, the cultural diversity employment profile data. Oh, sorry, we'll bring in councillor McCarthy. Thank you councillor Williams. I'm just waiting for councillor McCarthy to return. Thank you. We'll get a move on. So we're at 11.2, cultural diversity employment profile data. This is councillor Greco's notice of motion. Would you like- This is Councillor Greco's notice of motion. Would you like to move the motion, Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Newton. I'd like to move the revised motion that I have circulated.
Okay. Councillor Greco, you need to seek leave of the chair to put forward an alternative notice of motion.
Yes, that's my intent, is to receive leave from the chair to put a revised motion, as I've indicated in an email earlier this afternoon.
Yes, that is acceptable. And do you have, is there a second for the alternative motion put forward by Councillor Greco? Councillor Demetriades, Councillor Greco, would you like to speak to the item?
Thank you, Mayor Newton. Thank you for giving me leave to put forward a revised motion. Look, councillors, this is a long overdue piece of work that I believe our council needs to do. It's long overdue because we're a council that prides itself on supporting diversity and we've had a strong legacy in relation, in this space. What this, and the importance of this motion in regards to workforce diversity and actually analysing what our workforce diversity is, is important because in the, there's a really well established business case for why that's important for large organisations, particularly government organisations, to assess and understand and develop a profile of their workforce from a diversity perspective. Why that's important? Because it's been proven in a lot of business journals that it increases productivity, it provides for better customer service and also provides for better community engagement, something that we need to be better at. So it's important that we embark on this journey. And what this report refers to is that it asks officers to come back to council with a report on how we can collect that data and how we can then assess that data into the future to ensure that the staff that actually work at the City of Darabban better resembles the community that it serves, given that this is a very, very diverse community. So the information that I'm hoping that will come back from our offices will be what we would need to do in order to achieve that and what sort of information we would need to collect and how we can ensure that that information remains confidential with, in the organisation. We already collect a lot of confidential information of our staff, whether it's their address, their bank details and things like that. So the information that we will be collecting in order to develop a profile of our staff will fall in that bracket. Just as an example, councillors, to tell you how real this is, the ABC, the national broadcaster, has conducted this type of work. And it was interesting to see that the ABC, when they did this, embarked on this, 85% of their employees provided information voluntarily to the organisation in respect to their diversity. And that proved fundamental in terms of then developing targets and strategies on how to ensure that the workforce better reflects the community that it serves. So we have cases here in Australia like the ABC and I'm really hopeful that we're able to do this and embark on this important piece of work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Greco. I'll go to the second. Councillor Demetriades?
I'll reserve my right, thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any further speakers to the item? Councillor Hannon?
Mayor, I'd like to propose an amendment. I'd sent through one earlier today with a number of lines. I think for the sake of time, I just want to, sorry, apologies. I sent through earlier in the day an amendment with a number of items. I think for the sake of time, I'd just like to put forward one of those items and I've just recirculated that just a minute ago. It's the item that says, refers to consideration through Darabban's Council Cultural Diversity Action Plan as part of the 2324 Council Action Plan. It's certainly those words rather than seeking a report.
Thank you. Is that acceptable to the mover and second?
Mayor Newton, could I actually see those words so that I can better understand it?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm conscious of the time.
And also, councillors, I'll just ask for an extension of time. I believe we can complete the business by 10.15. So, Councillor Reddy, extend till 10.15. Councillor McCarthy, second. All those in favour? That is carried unanimously. So, Councillor Greco, we'll just get the amendment up on screen.
Yeah, just a minute ago, I just took out the one line in place of the August report. I'll take Councillor Greco's amendment and in place of seeking a report in August, just that one line I've just circulated. Please.
Councillor Hannon, is that your amendment at five? Thank you. Is that acceptable to the mover and second?
Which point are the?
Sure. So it's replacing RSE's report at the August council meeting with refers to consideration through Darabban Council's Cultural Diversity Action Plan as part of the 2324 Council Action Plan.
I really can't accept that. No, I can't accept that.
Thank you. Do you have a second, Councillor Hannon? Councillor McCarthy? Councillor Hannon, would you like to speak to the amendment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll try to keep it brief. So Darabban has a strong commitment to promoting cultural diversity and addressing racism. It's a key element of our strategic plan, including several elements with a headline of implementing the welcoming city standard and with the aim of becoming a mentoring level council. And I thank the Welcoming Cities Reference Group for raising this issue and they do a wonderful job providing advice and recommendations on related matters. I will skip a bit of a timeline on requests that have been made on this and a previous workshop on this item. Can come back to that if needed. But the main point about this is that, yes, part of the welcoming city standard is to make sure that the, is that the workforce, Darabban Council's workforce, reflects the cultural diversity of our community. And it's an important notion. It's certainly not a question of commitment. It's mainly a question of resourcing and doing it right. And in order to track our progress, we need to do it systematically. The best way to do this is part of a planned upgrade and overhaul of the payroll system as part of the Enterprise Resource Planning Design, ERP, which is council's new IT system that we have committed to. And this is because, one, it's the most reliable and systematic way of collecting data rather than having multiple one-off surveys, which cannot be reliably compared to each other. Two, it's a secure and confidential platform, which is really important when you're talking about personal and sensitive information, needs to be treated confidentially and carefully. And three, this is work that is coming. It's planned to be done in coming months. So what we don't need, given our discussion today about additional work on the organisation, we don't need to receive an additional report on this. What we do need is it to be considered thoughtfully and systematically as part of an overall of our HR systems, HR and IT systems, which we'll be happening in coming months. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor McCarthy. Would you like to speak to the amendment?
I'll reserve my right, ma'am.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers to the amendment? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Newton. Look, I'm speaking against this is that, as the motion says, the Welcoming Cities Committee, it's been four years that they've been requesting and the council embark on this project and to gather this information as quickly as possible. There've been many attempts by the Welcoming Cities Committee and I feel that this motion, with all its good intent, would actually kick the issue down the road again even further. So also, I want to point out that I sought advice from the officers and I took their advice about the timing of it. Originally, I had said to provide a report at the next council meeting. The officers suggested August. I fully embraced that so that this work actually can be undertaken. I also believe that it's such an important piece of work that has been neglected in the past, that it has to be treated as a separate piece of work, that then subsequently in the future, it could form part of the action plan that's referred to by Councillor Hannon. But I think we really need to do the work on this project separately at the moment because actually you would involve very many parts of the organisation to actually collate the information and do that work. Look, I note that other organisations that have done this sort of work, have done it as a separate project, particularly when they've initiated it in order to establish it and make it a usual course of action. And then, once it is established, then it can filter into a policy setting of the council. We really look at our escape, councillors, get this done in order to show the Welcoming Cities Committee that this work is important and we trust their judgement about doing this particular work and like that we can maintain a positive and fruitful relationship with the Welcoming Cities Advisory Committee members. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there further speakers to the item? Councillor McCarthy?
Mayor, look, I wasn't going to speak, but I'm going to make it really brief because I think I want to restate the point, which I think Councillor Hannon made, but I think it's become more urgent for me. We've just had a report this evening, Mayor, about our quarterly report about the in excess of 100 items that have been loaded on to the council officer's plate to deal with. I'm frankly, I'm tired of us not being clear about our intent. If we adopt a council plan, if we move towards having an action plan, such as a cultural diversity action plan, then we need one source of truth for our officers. It is effectively the same group of people that end up doing the work on these things. And when we ask them to do two separate pieces of work, create additional reports into the council chamber and don't integrate the work into the action planning work that we're already doing, then we do ourselves and the organisation a great disservice. So I'm asking all councillors to really support good planning and good thinking. I absolutely commend Councillor Greco on his passion and interest and longstanding interest in this issue. And I'm fully supportive of all the other points that have been raised and happy to see them go through. But we must integrate our work. We cannot keep overloading the organisation with parallel processes that actually only add to bureaucracy and frankly, I think are not the best use of ratepayers' money and the investment of government, state government in councils as well. So I would urge councillors to please support Councillor Hannon's amendment. I think it is simple, straightforward and puts this in the line of work that's already underway.
Thank you, Councillor McCarthy. So I'll close the debate on the amendment there. Councillors, we are now voting on the amendment at item five. All those in favour? It's Councillor Hannon, Councillor Reddy, Councillor Williams, Councillor McCarthy, Councillor Lawrence and Councillor Newton, all those against. Councillor Demetriades and Councillor Greco, that amendment is passed. That now becomes part of the substantive motion. Are there any further speakers on the substantive motion?
Mayor Newton, if I may, say a few words?
Councillor Lawrence, sorry, Councillor Greco, you've already spoken to the motion.
I think I spoke to, that's right, because I moved the original motion.
Yes, you were the mover of the motion. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, just briefly, because we're running up against time. This metric of cultural and linguistic diversity is very important. Obviously, the City of Darabban have been a leader in multiculturalism and interculturalism for many years. So it is properly, it should be properly integrated to the policy and also flow through to KPIs for officers and the organisation. However, I would say there's two things we are missing in terms of metrics and some of them we've covered, obviously with gender through the Local Government Act and also ONI actions in terms of gender representation in the workforce and also in terms of sexual identity. But the two probably still outstanding that need to catch up with this debate also in terms of having a workforce that reflects the lived experience of the residents is disability and carers, carers of disabled people and of course aged people. So older people. So that is a sign of a healthy workforce when you're servicing diverse communities. And I think this work not only has to happen here at Darabban, but we should have an evidence base to take it to the state government to make it more a sector wide approach. That's all. Thank you. I'm supporting.
Thank you, Councillor Lawrence. Well said. Are there any further speakers to the item? No, okay, we're running down the clock. So we'll close the debate. I'll just say that I too think this is really important. But I very much agree with Councillor McCarthy that we did hear about how it has been challenging for staff to complete the council plan, action plan, with 125 motions sending people in different directions. So what I really like about where this has landed is that this allows us to look at this process through the process that is already happening, which is the Cultural Diversity Action Plan. And I think now that we're going ahead with the ERP, it's a really good time to do it. So looking forward to seeing what comes back. But also, as Councillor Lawrence talked about, very much looking at this from an intersectional approach of all the beautiful, different diversities that we have within the Darabban community and beyond. So I'll close the debate there and I'll put the item to the vote. All those in favour? That's Councillor Hannon, Councillor Reddy, Councillor Greco, Councillor, oh, sorry, Councillor Demetriades, you're voting for? Okay, in that case, that's carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. And we will go to item 12, urgent business. There's no urgent business. Items considered confidential, there's none. So we're at item 14, closer business. As there is no other business to consider this evening, I would like to say thank you and good night to councillors, officers, members of the public who attend, it's now viewers, live streaming tonight's meeting. I declare the council meeting closed at 10.10pm. And I'll now ask the live